And I am calling this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order at 6:33 on Monday, June 2. First off, I would ask if any members of the board have a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda tonight? Approval of minutes is the next item. We'll start with...
May 5.
May 5, yes. I'll bring that up here with luck.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 5, 2014.
Second. I have a couple of corrections, additions. I would insert the mnemonic for the highway hotline, it's a lot easier to remember, than the, than the phone number.
What was that again?
7 Shaft's Boo 7. Again, the highway hotline is a one, a centralized number that citizens can use to call in and report road conditions. It is checked by the road foreman and town officials regularly. Down under the public hearing on discontinuance, my recollection of Brian Lent's statement relative to maintaining the road is that Peckham, in the event of discontinuance, would maintain the road if, if received ownership, if Peckham received ownership. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Brian Lent stated Peckham would maintain the road if the town discontinued it, which implies they would have ownership, oh no, would...
Yeah, I thought I remembered him specifically saying he wanted to own it if he wanted, if he was gonna maintain it.
Okay, own it right away.
If they own it.
On page five, we made a motion about the tax year being July 1 to June 30. I was clarifying that just a bit. We didn't change that, that's the way it's always been. It had been done wrong for a while and we were just confirming that the right dates are June 1 to June 30.
So what are you changing, Tim?
On page five, Mitch Race made a motion to change, I changed "change" to confirm that the town's tax year to July. To confirm that, that the town's tax year is July 1 through June 30. That's all I have. Any other additions or corrections to the minutes? All in favor of accepting them as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
And then for 519, I move that we accept the minutes for 519 as emailed out today. Under discussion, I have a couple of things. Down under the emotion, the motion about Don Green Road, at the bottom of page three, just for clarification, I would add, right there, the motion to amend carried 500. And then Margie's notes are correct, but just for clarity, I said, I restated the motion in the final action. The town of Shasberry shall discontinue Don Green Road, in favor with zero, opposed five, abstain zero, the motion failed. Just to be clear, what was, what was agreed to?
I'll follow up with you afterwards about your...
Yeah, I've got it all right here.
Oh, this is true.
Yeah, so...
Sorry, I can't see that far. Get my glasses. Yep, okay.
That's all I have. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes on 519? All in favor of accepting the minutes as corrected for 519, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Approval of warrants, I move that we...
Can I interject, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The, at the last minute, later, late this afternoon, I was able to park a PDF copy of draft minutes from the town plan hearing. Okay. We're having technical difficulties with Word, I could not get it into shape for you to review tonight. So they are there and for us to approve probably at your next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty much an itemization of people's comments as they occurred.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I took notes too, so I'll compare mine to yours and then we, without objection, will take those up the next time.
Sure.
Shall we move to warrants? I move that we approve check warrant number 32 in the amount of $9,792.38. Motion to approve. Second. I moved it, I just need a second.
Second.
Under discussion, major items there are $1,119 to Green Mountain Power, $1,291 to John Ray &amp; Sons. What is that, Margie?
John Ray &amp; Sons is our diesel.
Diesel, okay. I'll start remembering these sooner or later.
Yeah.
VRS sales is $1,887. What was that one?
I suspect that's fire department, but I might be wrong, you'd have to pull the invoice there, Tim.
From what rescue services, could be, yeah. All in favor of approving check warrant number 32, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? This is a retirement warrant. I move re-accept retirement warrant, PR 24R. Do I have a second?
Second.
In the amount of $115.19. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye, no, no exception. I'm, I'm approved.
We all, we all agree, 500? Third, I have payroll, payroll warrant number 24. I move re-approve payroll warrant number 24. Do I have a second?
Second.
In the amount for that?
In the amount of $18,242.66. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any other payroll or warrant issues?
Nope.
Are there any public comments today? Road foreman update. Terry.
Graders still run them every day. Started doing culverts across the roads that collapsed or failed. I'm gonna start on White Creek Road for ditching tomorrow, getting ready for the blacktop.
Starting on White Creek tomorrow?
White Creek tomorrow, yeah.
Okay. Do you know what North Huntington, I assume, was doing on Bank Street today?
They're gonna be there for probably a week, they're putting in, it's not North Huntington, it's a sewer plant, is putting in new catch basin right in the middle of the road. They're removing an old one and putting a new one in. Because of our blacktop, they're trying to hurry to get it done before, they're gonna put four water lines across the road also before the blacktop comes. Hopefully, middle, beginning, middle of July, we can start reclaiming the hill part and getting that done, so hopefully the end of July, we can blacktop like old. We have on the books right now to also reclaim what are here, State Park Road.
Right.
To get rid of the blacktop dirt, blacktop dirt, make it all dirt where we can grade it then.
And that's gonna happen?
Same time that they're, they'll do that one day, then they'll go up there for one day.
Okay.
Do that.
And, I'm sorry, who, who is they again?
Well, right now, it is Peckham's. From the phone calls I've made, nobody will bid against them, basically. I've called Allstate and I've called Garrity and they're, they buy all their product through Peckham, so they would never come into Peckham's own town, they said, and be competitive bid. Is basically just what they told me. They'll give us a bid, but not really worth their time to do it.
Okay.
And we've always seen that to be the case, Peckham comes in as the lowest.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But this is related, that comment of Terry's is related to the next agenda item, whether or not, you know, not to jump the gun, just to keep in mind whether we do, still want competitive bidding, the reclamation of State Park is less than $10,000.
Oh, it's 50, one day reclaiming is $5,500.
Yeah.
That's gonna stay dirt?
Or whether we just wanna go full source.
Stay dirt, okay. We can't fix it right now, it's broke up so bad that it, there's potholes in the, in the blacktop and we've had to fill them in with dirt and...
No, it's cheaper, it's cheaper to leave it dirt anyway.
Yeah, we can, we can maintain it when it's dirt.
Yeah.
We've pretty much hit everything at least once, even the smaller dead end roads. We're, I mean, we're on sometimes the third, third pass on some of the roads, like Madison Road today was the third time we've done that already this spring. And we haven't, tomorrow will be the first day that we could possibly grade that we're not going to grade, we'll be working on White Creek Road because of the speed of the cars out there, we have to have traffic control and we'll have trucks set up with lights on and it, they fly down through there. I've gotta sit right in the middle of the road with the excavator, so...
And we'll have to hit that but once, they'll slow down.
Oh, they definitely will.
Hey Terry, quick question, last, you left before last meeting and we were going through the budget, actuals of things, and it says we're over budget on the 2013 tandem budget 1,000, it was at 2,500. What, what caused that overage? Is it...
Front tires.
Front tires both, you caught something or...
Well, ours done some more research on it and found out that Goodyear, we have an oversized tire on the front for weight capacity, so we made the restrictions for all the weights, well, Goodyear's the only one that won't accept chains on it for the winter time driving.
And you had chains.
And I didn't know that when we had, got the truck and International usually always comes with Goodyears, which is usually a good tire.
Mm-hmm.
We've never had any problem with any of the 225s, but the wider tire in the Goodyear, the chains lead them right up.
Is it because of the width of the tire, the chains went...
The chains dug right into it and actually just peeled it right apart. And then you, and also you gotta remember...
I mean, I know, they can, they can cost quite a bit.
Margie and I just reorganized it this year, all the trucks, like, we have a hard winter this year, we didn't make it one winter on one set of chains. We had to go into the second set, which is still good for next year, but now they might not make it through next year's, so we bought two sets of chains for all the trucks this year.
Now that's a couple of the other overages.
It comes in just in the truck budget, the chains are, what we allowed for this year, we, we added a little bit more money, I believe, I don't remember how much, for chain purchase.
Yeah, I have to go back to my, my notes.
Was that the tire that blew up on you?
Nope, that was the rear one that blew up on me.
Yeah, I just, I noticed there was a few overages and I did, 2013 was the one, I figured it was probably something like that, that's what I...
Another thing is, we, we never, we're, we're getting on top of it now, you buy a truck and then you think it's all brand new and we have $1,000 in there, really quickly, we never figured in like the radios. And we have to buy a radio when it gets here, there's $600. And then you buy the tire chains, there's $400. So you got a brand new truck and you've already put $1,000 in, and you're like, why is a brand new truck getting so much money put into it? When Margie looks it up on the receipt, she can explain it very easily, but...
Yeah, I mean, if you weren't here and that's, I just had to...
Now, we try to buy them with everything complete when it comes to the door, it's got chains, it's got carbide plow blades on it, it's got everything that we need for, to go to work with it.
Yeah, you don't have to, you don't have to play around with it once you get it.
Yeah, I think what ultimately shows is just a little bit of a cost shift in a way of working expenses, 'cause we have a catch-all line at the end of the equipment budget, machinery and equipment.
And we do put a lot, a lot of things, like she just said, as a catch-all, that doesn't really have its own, like grass seed, I get from our, I don't really have a place to put grass seed, you can spend $50 and one day on grass seed, there's no really place to put grass seed in our budget area, there's a lot of things that fall into that category that is hard to explain to find a budget area to put them into.
Had you got it in the plan to do that, stretch a ditch on the right-hand side up on Twitchell Hill, that was left?
Yeah, we're gonna, we've got it in the budget to finish that.
No, I mean, have you got it in the schedule to...
Oh, no, I, I've been just, until we get the graders out of the, out of the way...
Yeah.
I think we're pretty well caught up this week, but then next week, your brother's gonna come in for training for each individual, three main guys with the graders, he's gonna do training with them next week on the graders, so... After that, hopefully we can park the graders for a little while.
Yeah, now, when you go like up in Hidden Valley, there was a couple spots where there were really large potholes before you graded it last time. When you go back to grade that again, are you gonna grade the whole road or just, just areas where them potholes were?
Depending on what the weather is, can, a lot of times, if we're raining, racing rainstorms or if we have a stretch with, I'll have them spot grade and we won't even rake, just to get them so they're passable for cars. When we go back and do them for the final time like today, we will rake them and chloride them also.
Yeah, but I'm saying, that's generally like Hidden Valley, that's probably the only place that's gonna come back.
Down in the valley, you're saying, I love it.
Where them big potholes, where the rest of the road was pretty good and fully graded?
That usually stays good.
Yeah.
That usually stays good up there.
I mean, it just, a lot of times don't make any sense to grade the whole road when you only got...
No, we don't, we don't.
Maybe four spots and the whole road in there.
Basically, two times a year, we grade everything totally.
Yeah.
Otherwise, now, we're just trying to touch up areas that...
Right.
Gain rough spots, yes. I mean, you, you know, graders, 80 gallons of fuel a day.
Yeah. But I mean, it just knows the road is basically smooth, why you wanna go tear it up again?
No, I agree, I agree. With this, the first time of the year, I think we need to do it, even if the normal eye doesn't see it because of the washboards with the sand.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm not trying to call it out.
We gotta mix the sand in from the winter sand...
Yeah.
...to get the gravel back up.
Yeah, yeah.
It's good.
Don't get any condition.
It does go good.
The blades are flaying the right way.
And I believe Margie's got the final, right up for the tandem bids, so we can get that out, get that underway.
All done.
Couple things, Terry, is there a meeting on Holy Smoke Road?
Thursday.
Thursday at?
6.
6.
6 on June 5.
On the top corner, I believe it says.
Okay, yeah.
I'll try to get some state information for you that I'll try to give to you before that, just so you can have what the requirements are. I believe you, you people signed in, well, it might not have been you, but in January, if we do any work on a road, we have to meet a certain standard now.
Yes, we have to meet state standards.
Right, that's what I'm gonna try to, I'll make sure I have it.
I have those right here.
Okay.
That's that FEMA stuff?
No.
No, that's just our...
State financing or funding money that they, they give us, but if we do something, we have to do it to their standard. Anything, any kind of work we do to operate a road, we've gotta meet their standards.
Well, you have to do parabolic, shave ditches, we know that that's, we need the width for that.
It's like 3 feet.
But these, these standards actually do not talk about the width of traveled ways.
I did talk to Norm today, but he said not to hold him to it, but he felt the same as I did, 18 foot minimum, 22 foot maximum. You gotta have it so two cars can pass each other on a road if we redo it.
Does that 22 foot include ditches or no, just travel space?
Travel space. But if it's a class three road, we can minimize it down to 18 feet. Two cars at 5 miles an hour can pass each other, not at 55 though.
Unless they're good drivers.
But I, I mean, the other thing is, it depends how much, I guess, you people wanna push and how much they wanna push. Right now, I've been told the school bus is gonna go up the hill because of the corner, so I don't know if that's something they feel strongly we've gotta have done for them or if they just don't care.
And one other thing, when you're on the White Creek Road, it's been pointed out to me that the shoulder is going...
I think it's fixed, we did it last week.
Beyond Brownells?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
I put a lot of large stones in there, filled in with gravel on the tops, about 2 foot wider it was.
Good, thank you.
On the, the school bus issue, is that, I assume we're talking about a lot bigger deal than cutting down trees if we try to straighten that out?
Just cut the corner, that's all, the trees gotta come out of the corner, it's simple.
Just about how, it's just a question of how wide you make it?
Yeah, just for the swing.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, thanks for the flowers there, for, she didn't have any today, I went down to get them.
So then we will make it so that the school bus can turn the corner? Are you asking us if...
Well, I am going to try to get something in writing from the lady to see if, if they even need the road or if that's the reason they're not, because I just wanna have all our ducks in a row, I mean, I wanna have every reason we're doing this, besides for landowners complaining, but obviously, there's a lot that don't want it done, so...
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, keep us apprised on that, my inclination is that we should make it so the school bus can navigate the road, even if there aren't kids there today, there might be kids there tomorrow.
Is it the actual road or is it the site visibility up there?
I'm not really sure what the reason is. We had to widen the first corner down by, drawing a blank on his name, he's lived there forever.
Phil Harvey?
No, oh, Harvey, yes. Right there, I had to widen that corner for the school bus to go up to Freeman's House as it is.
Yeah.
They wouldn't go up there till I widened it by 4 feet.
That was last year.
Last year I did that.
Yeah.
We did that, yep.
We had an email from someone at Bernstein's asking if we thought we might someday want to store more than the grader on their parking lot. Do we?
Well, we, he didn't raise the price, but he gave us 3 bays for the excavator also, we wanna put that down there in the winter.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So this winter, you'd like to add the excavator?
Yeah, we were going to last year, but we ended up using it for trees, knocking the trees down all winter, so...
Have you had any concerns or questions from him about the fact that somebody else might be wanting to use that space or else?
Nope, he's never called me once, he just, every fall, he says, I got the garage cleared for you.
I expect the issue's gone away.
He just calls me, says the garage is already for you and still got your key and that's about it.
Okay.
He's been pretty good to us, very good to us.
All right. Sounds like that should happen then.
Make a motion for it or do you wanna just put it on the agenda next?
Uh...
Put it on the agenda next meeting or just make a motion to continue this relationship?
We get a, a formal written letter every fall that we just signed, set amount of dollars. We don't really have a, I think he does have a time period on there, but we can leave it there longer or go in earlier, he doesn't really care.
I think it was also, the inquiry came fairly soon after, to me anyway, the email, after the bond vote failed in December, so I think he knew we were still out of garage storage space and he was trying to accommodate the town, you know, just for verbal space if we needed.
Okay, but that's something we don't need to take up until the fall then?
Not, he said not formally, that we didn't, he didn't want a formal commitment, just, I can get back to him saying, yeah, we're still interested for winter storage for sure.
Yeah.
And that would suffice.
Okay. Make it so.
Yeah.
That, one other thing I was supposed to mention, Margie, I might...
We did, no, we did the grader training session as for next week. We had, you and I were talking today about Murphy Hill and maybe staking out portions, how we're gonna approach drainage in certain portions of the road.
We have a get together Thursday, I mentioned Margie, maybe the three of us could take a ride out, take a look at it.
Murphy Hill.
Murphy Hill is one other area in the hollow we wanna look at. And by the way, just to be right now, that gentleman that called about the culvert, that's the property of the gentleman, we need to get hold of to cut the trees down to make a bypass road.
This is now, what road are we talking?
Where the culvert is failing out in the hollow.
The hollow, okay.
That's his property that we need to go across to make a temporary road out.
Okay.
The map you gave me, I looked at it.
That's a culvert that is failing?
That's the one that is failing anyway.
Okay.
The one we're trying to get a grant from the state for.
Okay.
That's that big multi-play.
Yeah.
I don't know if you heard anything about the, the tour we did of Howard Park and some of the repairs we have contemplated out there?
Yeah, I haven't filled them in yet.
Okay, well...
Moving as a playgirl?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a few things out there that we'd like to get fixed that we think the road crew could fix, so just as a heads up, you'll like be, you'll be seeing a, a to-do list from us relative to the park in the near future.
We're taking the oil tank out tomorrow night.
Right.
Okay.
We're also, first thing in the morning, Norm's coming up in the morning, we're gonna do the crosswalks tomorrow, I've called the state, I've played around with that, just easier just for us to paint them.
So this is just gonna be here at Buck Hill?
Here, here and Main Street. We'll do all three.
Main Street?
Just get it done, get it over with.
Wait, 7A?
Yeah.
You're striping across 7A, they stayed, they said it was okay?
They didn't tell me not to, what do they want? They don't know when they can get down here.
Oh, you mean where we have, the traditional crosswalk has been?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Just figured for how long it'll take us, I might as well just do one, get it over with, 15 minutes per, per walk, Norm said, the paint dries like that.
So you're gonna wanna do here, because this is school, we know...
Yeah, there used to be one here also, across the end of the street.
Yes, I know, but now there's no sidewalk on that side and the store isn't open right now.
You don't think we should do that one out?
I just, I don't know, I don't, I fully haven't, I hadn't thought about it, I didn't know you were gonna do that. And...
I can just do it.
Church Street, Church Street is somewhat dependent on the sidewalk project, right?
Right, that's why we can't do that one.
You told...
I mean, I, I thought you had to have the crosswalk from, from pave, sidewalk to sidewalk, which is why I always wondered why there was a crosswalk across Buck Hill at this location. But, but they have the handicap disabled access to, you can roll down into Buck Hill here.
Yes.
So...
Used to be a paved.
They wouldn't have done that if they don't seem to think that a crosswalk is warranted there.
You have four apartment buildings right on the other side of the store, plus the other house.
Right.
And actually, there is a stairway on that side of the street down under the overpass.
Right.
I don't know how good a shape it's in, I don't know whose property that actually is or whose responsibility that is, but...
I don't know, I don't, I don't think it'd be safe to walk down anyway. I don't think it'd be safe to walk down anyway.
Probably not.
It's been there for...
When I was a kid, it was a good shade, I used to walk down all the time.
Yeah, where we're handicapped, it's getting people from the east side to the west side, north of our intersection, here, to that, get over to the sidewalk, you know, beyond billows and beyond buzzies.
Tell me if you want it or don't want it.
It's not up to me alone, I mean, it's...
What, what, what was the nature of the conversation you had with the state? They, you were telling them you were gonna be...
I just called them and like to give the road striped or to do this, when we're in there, in that area, we'll get to it, well, they were just down here and they just did the stop bars down on Eagle Street, but they didn't come up here and do this.
Mm-hmm.
So it's basically free for all in there, here, they'll do it when they're, that's why Norm bought the machine to do it, he just gave up on it, just for 15 minutes and whatever it is for 5 gallons of paint, you do 2 or 3 of them and you're done with it.
Mm-hmm.
We'll just direct traffic for a few minutes and...
What about the one Ludgely Drive? There's a, there's a crosswalk there.
Yeah.
It's actually painted on the road there?
Yes.
We can do that one?
I think it should be, 'cause that, we want the kids to walk down... I think it should be, because that, we want the kids to walk down and then cross down.
I can, yeah, we can do that one also. I, I just don't want to be on White Creek Road before nine o'clock. I want to let the morning traffic get by and.
See, I, I personally am very comfortable with this location, because it's sidewalk to sidewalk. And then this location down on, on Main Street.
Both of them, on Main Street.
Both of them on Main Street, south of the intersection. Then Buck Hill across, I,
Okay.
I just don't know.
Buck Hill at the school?
Right here.
Right at the intersection.
Right here, which directs you into an unpaved, I mean, it basically is.
The blacktop went over a paved section, it used to be there, there used to be a crosswalk right there. They never painted it after they repaved it.
Oh, okay.
But it makes perfect sense. When you look at the geometry of traditional intersections, you do, you have your crosswalks doing this.
When they're directing traffic in the morning for the kids, kids come that way, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any objections about that? No, go ahead. What was that?
We'll cover it up if they don't like it, we'll get some black paint.
We'll apologize.
All right.
Okay.
Good.
About four locations.
Anybody else have anything for Terry?
Were we gonna meet Thursday morning or not this week? We traditionally had meetings on Thursday mornings, whatever.
We haven't started that.
That's fine?
Yes.
Eight o'clock then?
Is that okay for your, our schedule for you?
Here, come on here.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
We're gonna be on which side of the Holy Smoke Road on Thursday?
The top corner.
Thanks, Terry.
Now, if you want to attend, I can warn that as a special meeting, just to cover anybody that wants to go. Why don't I do that? Okay.
Look at it.
Yeah. You're gonna have some interest.
Okay, item seven, paving and paving slash reclaiming bid process practices. Margie, you want to do?
That just goes back to our purchasing policies that in certain instances, if we really are basically in a situation where it's almost a sole source vendor for reclaiming, if we have no competition in this region, then I would suggest maybe just to make it clean that we make a motion to waive our purchasing policies for reclamation of State Park Road, so that we can go ahead and tell Peckham, we'd like you out there and make sure that gets in your schedule. Or I can, if it's less than ten thousand dollars, I don't have to have a notice in the paper per se, but we would still need three, three written quotes. So the board has, you know, whatever you, you decide you would like to do.
Is there a motion to, uh, name Peckham as a sole source proprietor for reclamation of State Park Road?
Is that the only one? I thought there were two.
Well, there are two others. Oh, that, well, here's, well, listen, how should we handle this? Because there is the section of White Creek that needs to be reclaimed and that puts us way over ten thousand dollars. If that, I, you're, you're right, I guess the equipment would be here, so it would make sense to do both.
Absolutely.
Well, then.
Can we name?
Then we need to do formal bid.
Yeah.
We can't name a sole source over ten thou-
Well, we could, if you decide to.
Yeah, but Terry said the other guys won't bid anyway.
That's right, so we could.
Local people that won't bid against Peckham or in area?
No, it's just, he's, he's got, they gotta buy their material out of him anyway.
Well, the machine.
They cannot bid on it.
Aren't that many of those machines around here?
No, no.
I, I make the motion that Peckham be the sole source for.
Okay.
But what, I mean, is that a perpetuity or just for these reclaiming here?
Just for this, I would say just for this year.
Just for this one, because, uh, I mean, that's, I mean.
Right, you could have changing conditions for sure.
So they have the big, they have the big reclamation machine?
Yeah.
With the tracks with the.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, other people do too, Mitch, but the thing is, any material they gotta buy, they've gotta buy it from Peckham.
So the reclamation is tearing it up and putting down another layer on top of them?
Yeah, well, there's other, I'm not exactly sure how they do, but that's some of the material involved, yeah. And then all that comes from Peckham.
Trucking away and.
Yeah.
And no one can compete.
You know, the other, other pike.
If I may, uh, we have a motion, Peckham named sole source proprietor for reclamation of State Park Road and White Creek Road. Is there a second?
Yeah, I gave him a second.
Okay, I didn't hear that. All right, now we can discuss.
And, I mean, for, this is for this year, wasn't, it wasn't.
Specifically says for those two projects.
Yeah.
For those two projects, uh.
The only other thing I'd like to put in there.
Fourteen projects.
Would be that the, it is reclaimed to the width of the existing road. So we don't get another situation like we had on Twitchell Hill. Where they narrowed it up and we had the trouble with the drainage and the ditches and all that. And also the entrances to the driveways, the aprons.
Can I suggest that's a separate issue from sole sourcing, uh, Peckham for, for the, for the project?
Well, it's, I wanted to bring it up, you know, however you want to make it go, but.
Yeah, I think it would be, uh, uh, we could have another motion to that effect, but I think, uh, it doesn't, it's not direct, it's only indirectly tied to whether or not Peckham is the sole source for this project.
Okay. And that's strictly the reclaiming, I mean, we aren't doing any paving, we're taking up the old pave, pavement.
For State Park, it's just reclamation. For White Creek, you are going to be, you have a top coat going down afterwards. But the reclaiming has to be done in advance of the paving, it has to sit and settle and become packeded and then.
And then the blacktopping of the whole thing is another.
So you may, you may have a couple of weeks break before the paving.
Now, how does this go, Margie? Do they dispose of the material that they've planed up? Or do they reuse that with new, with new oil?
With new oil?
Tar.
That I, that's a technical question I can't answer. I've seen them put the material.
I've seen it done both ways, but sometimes they just take that, the material they planned off, take it up there, run it back to the blacktop plant.
Well, what I'm wondering is whether we, when we get to the point where we're off, we can further discuss it maybe after the motion, whether we want to, uh, work on a set of specs for them. It's always best that we are in the commanding chair anyway.
Yeah.
To tell them what we want.
Okay.
We think would be best for the surface, given what we know.
Well, I, I don't know, I, I don't know that, I think that should be up to them, they're the experts on that. But it's, I mean, I know some of it, but I don't know, because there's a couple of different ways of doing it. You can take the, plane the tap off, take that over, dump it up to Peckham's and then they put it right back to the blacktop plant. Or they can plain it off and put brand new blacktop on there.
In both cases, neither one are gonna be done.
I don't.
And State Park Road is going to be left dirt.
Yeah, I know that, right.
And on the White Creek Road, the paving is actually gonna be done by another project. So that, that's gotta be ground down and left until the hole, the holes, all the way from town, the North Bennington Town Line
Yeah.
to Brown Hills is, that's another project.
So that's a whole project, that's all part of this grinding for, for.
The grinding is separate, the grinding has to be done and now the paving project is a totally different project.
Yeah, but the paving project will cover what has been ground down. That's all part of the specification that we have today, the states are already.
So neither case are they ever gonna blacktop again on this pro, on this, uh, for what, what we're asking them to do.
And that's all the states, we've made, got it up to their specs and everyone's happy.
Okay.
And who was, who did Terry say that two people, he said Garrity and someone else said?
Well, we have all states, they've bid before. Uh, the other company I had not actually heard about. But they will certainly be notified of the paving project for White Creek.
I'll just state that I, I mean, a single source bid is, is tricky. Uh, I mean, we do have an advantage having them in our town.
Yeah.
But I, and we got an end date on this. I just don't want it to, you know, because next thing you know, the prices go up and we could.
Well, I know. And you want to make sure we have competition. I mean, I think there is, um, yeah.
Are they giving us a, uh, these people just don't want to bid against them because they would get, they would increase their rates on their stuff they're selling? Is that they just want to have any competition?
I haven't talked with them, Mitch.
No, I thought what Terry.
Peckham's got the only blacktop plant within fifty miles. So they, the other guys gotta buy it out of Peckham anyway.
The other guys, what Terry was saying was that the other guys can't be competitive against Peckham in Shaftesbury.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Should Peckham be named sole source priority proprietor for a reclamation of State Park Road and White Creek Road for twenty fourteen projects? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Staying? It's unanimous. Uh, moving on to item eight. Uh, wow, we got behind fast. I didn't add this up very well, did I? Uh, Glastonbury agent renewal of memorandum of, uh, for municipal services is, uh.
Ricky, once again.
I'm here.
I'm sorry, I don't know what's going on. We've had two reminders. At this point, I suggest we just take it off the agenda.
Yeah. Okay, and they'll let us know. Um, or do we just want to go ahead and approve it without him, uh, being here? I mean, it's kind of, kind of unfortunate for him not to be here, but, uh, we're talking about providing solid waste and other services for six people. It's, it's a pretty routine matter.
That's right.
Margie mentioned, um, uh, this document, uh, where, uh, our attorneys advised us that we don't have to, uh, really go through an annual signing of the document, that we can just by motion, uh, indicate that we'd like to extend the term for another two years and allow, uh, the six or so Glastonbury residents to continue to receive solid waste and other, uh, services through the town of Shaftesbury. So moved.
Set it.
Any more discussion? So the motion is, uh, Glastonbury shall be allowed to receive municipal services. Municipal. Municipal. Services from Shaftesbury. For two years?
Two more years till July one, twenty sixteen.
Another two ye- two years until July first. Is it July first? First?
Yeah.
Twenty sixteen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Uh, Bennington County Sheriff's contract renewal. Did we ever get a, a, uh,
No, Chad had said he would be here with it.
Table.
Chad had, Chad had said he would be here.
Oh, and he would bring it?
I, I beg, I apologize to the board, it might have been that I had to leave before I could confirm the time for him to be here.
Okay. Why don't we skip over this and see if he shows up and then?
Right. But he was definitely knew this was the meeting night and that he was gonna be doing the contract renewal. And you could.
Or do we just want to pa- pass a motion saying we'd like to continue the, the sheriff's services for another year?
I'd like to see it. I mean, the one we have in the meeting minute are the, it's last year's, so I'd like to see the new one, the draw proper.
All right, we will postpone that, uh, until we see the agreement. Probably then, uh, well, we'll see if he shows up tonight and if we can look at the agreement quickly enough to make a decision tonight. Uh, item ten, constable request for uniforms and weapons. Paul, would you like to join us?
Sure. I, uh, I just made a proposal to Margie, I presented it. And I went to various vendors, I believe that's the cheapest way out. And the other reason why I did it is that I'm a firm believer that for some of the problems we're having in town, the constable can deal with those problems locally, but he's gotta be able to, to be identified. Blue jeans and a sidearm really is not, in my line of work, a, a good thing unless you're doing something that requires you to be in plain clothes. So that was the reason why I put this proposal together and I'm asking the board to approve.
Um, any comments from the board?
Yes, I mean, you've been asked to work with the emergency personnel doing a lockdown on Shaftesbury Elementary School, elementary school. And you had plain clothes for that?
I was.
It'd been nice if they would have had some visibility.
Well, we did. I mean, I explained to everybody who I was, um, I was with the state police and even people would ask, I was introduced as the constable for the town of Shaftesbury.
I mean, you're here to have these meetings. I think, uh, I think it's fair enough to be identified in a, as a, a officer or a public servant of the town with a shirt and pants, et cetera.
Paul, I just need to clarify that what you're talking about tonight is in this, in the estimate here, um, is the total of eight hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents?
Uniforms, but I believe I submitted firearm budget for it too.
That is, in my mind, very different.
It's here.
But it's there. So, but I, so my question is, is tonight's request for uniforms of eight eleven point eight eight, which would include the short sleeve shirts for both of you, the flying cross. Oh, was that the, that's the brand?
That's the brand.
That's the brand. Uh, and they were gonna be short sleeve and a long sleeve as well, and then pants.
I do have a proposal for full request, if you're talking about a stat deal for just a uniform, yes.
Yeah.
Just the uniforms.
Okay. But, okay, now, I have yet to actually total up this entire request, but I think I, I could go do that. Because there was no bottom line number on it, I really wasn't sure what the board was gonna do. Anytime the board wants me to do that, I can, because it's definitely, um.
Well, I see a uniforms for eight twelve essentially and, uh, weapons for one thousand fifty. Badges eighty-five each for two eighty-five.
Sixty-one, sixty-eight.
Yeah, okay, no, I can't do all that in my head, so it's.
That one there, that was a setup fee.
Looks to be north of two thousand dollars.
Right. On the, on those, those badges, they're eighty-five dollars apiece. So we saved money by not putting the town coal haul in, but that would have cost two hundred and eighty-five dollars to put down.
And when we talked, you had said you were gonna pay for those out of pocket.
Well, when we talked, I was talking about identificacy badges. Those are the things I showed my to photographs and wear them, so when you do site reviews, people will be able to recognize the select board zoning, whoever happens to be on, you'll be wearing something that says, I represent the town of Shaftesbury.
So basically the setup is two eighty-five if we wanted to have a special coal haul imprinted on the thing, but for the standard.
It's prohibited to, to do that, so a regular state seal.
Well, in my mind, this is a lot bigger question than a request, a normal request for, uh, an invoice. The constable is a, currently a two hundred dollar a year position or has a budget of two hundred dollars a year. This is at least ten times that. It implies at least, uh, an expanding of constable function. It implies at least, uh, an expanding of constable functions.
My constable function by statute is that I am a full-time certified police officer, so I'm entitled by statute and can exercise all the authority as a police officer, state trooper, and county sheriff. So I...
With... with training.
I am a... yes, with training.
But the minute a weapon comes into it, we are... all of a sudden, our insurance company... I wanna check with the insurance company. Whether... and then there is thirty hours of training every year, plus expenses. I mean, it just goes on and on and on. This is... this is more than just voting on this. This is voting on a whole bunch of stuff that comes back to haunt us later.
But one of the things that you have is that it's thirty... thirty hours of training is a minimum every year.
Every year, that's right.
Every year. And, uh, I get those thirty hours of training every year and then some. So these... these training hours that we talk about, a good majority of them are online. And there are some training that you... you need to go to. Firearms is one of them. So, you know, I... I understand that, you know, there's an expense there. But I don't believe it is as much as you think it's gonna be with two people filling in when we're needed.
I have a general... general question on the constable's stipend and the vote to pay him. In the town plan, it says the vote... the town votes to pay the constable's ten dollars an hour, but then in the stipend, it says two hundred dollars. So is that ten dollars an hour?
Ten dollars an hour is his, uh, uh...
Rate of pay.
Wage for when he performs duties and the two hundred dollars is the budget for the constable office for a year.
You can only do twenty hours worth of work per year? Is that what we're saying? So it is... that two hundred is inclusive of that?
That's... that's what we currently budget for is ten hours a year of constable service.
Historically, that could be drawn down by, let's say, out-of-pocket expenses. Sometimes constables would only bill for that. If they traveled, um, they would bill for anything to do, let's say, with phone... phone calls for, uh, unlicensed dogs. You might have an hour or two there, uh, which... because the constables used to do that on an annual basis. So it could be that line item... in summary, that line item is... has... we charged off wages against it, plus out-of-pocket expenses.
Well, I think it's important that they are identifiable. If there's a... I mean, we could... we could probably hold off on... and discuss this later at the next budget for the weapons, but we definitely need to be able to identify if he's doing any function for the town of Shaftesbury. I think we should be... he should be identifiable.
I would agree with that.
I mean, you don't want someone coming out, running out, trying to have... stop someone and the people don't know who the... who he is. And, uh... Not that he's gonna be wearing his... his uniform all the time anyways, but, I mean, it's... I think it's important. And, uh, when we get to the Howard Park, that might even come in handy there, too. For the, you know, having maybe using the constable in a uniform to go make a pass once in a while, and not on a schedule, off times, opening, closings, walk-through, make sure everyone's there, at least they know that people, you know, might tamp down the windows. You know, people know that somebody's watching and coming up. I think it's a good thing. What do you think?
Yeah.
No?
No, I would agree with that because if... Say it's anybody in town and Paul comes up and he's doing his... doing his job as a constable, he walks up, does anybody know who he is?
Even... even dog control. Say the dog... dog control officer can't make it. They call a constable. He goes in there, they don't know who he is.
No.
They start shooting at him.
I'm concerned about going over budget on this.
Well, for eight hundred dollars, that... that's the minimal of a budget increase compared to two tires on the front of a truck. I mean, that's a one tire.
The, uh, the previous board, uh, debated at length the question of constable duties and expand... the possibility of expanding the constable duties from what they have historically been and did not arrive at, uh, a decision or anything, I thought, close to consensus. And, uh, in my mind, this is, um, this is really a question of expanding constable duties. And it seems like we need, uh, to think about this more and, uh, take it into a larger context of ex... uh, as I say, of expanding constable duties. Uh, to me, it's not a simple question of... of buying uniforms or even in... not even the harder question of buying uniforms and weapons, but, uh, more in the general context of what do we want our constable to do and what kind of budget do we want to have for him?
Yeah, I guess my concern is that oftentimes we'll call you and it's a spur-of-the-moment thing. That means you're gonna have to change into a uniform in order to be identified and, I mean, you're... you gotta be constantly... all I can think of is the British, you know, that every time there's a function, they have... they change to clothes. So I... I'm... You know, and I agree, I'm concerned that, you know, now we're... we're moving toward either, you know, a part-time police force. That may not be necessary, that we're covered.
I mean, if an outfit and not a uniform, I think it's gonna... I think it could play into the problems like Howard Park. I think having an identifiable subject walk through there once a week or once a... every other day.
It'd have to be at night.
Well, it'd have to be closing time.
I think the problem that we have, and I can't answer that because it's... it's not reported. I don't get it when they're there. So as... as we do this job in other communities that I've been at, you know, knowledge is power, so if we know that the gates closed at four and when they opened up at eight, the place was vandalized, it kinda gives you an idea of where you wanna be. You know, as the summer months get in, as they come to play, the... the longer the days, the greater risk we have of vandalism. And so, you know, I throw it out that, you know, we can do that.
Does that mean that when you go to patrol, then you change into a uniform in order to patrol?
Well, you know, you're talking about foot patrol, not something that you're gonna run up and down the road, Tony. It's... it's, you know, if we go and there's a burn permit, people have to like... we have to be able to identify ourselves. I mean, right now, you have to take my word for it, I'm a constable, unless I bring in my swearing-in papers and show you. And, you know, it... it puts you behind the A-ball before you even get out of the car.
How about a badge?
Yep. That's part of the...
Just a... just a badge. Yep.
A badge in... at seven-thirty at night is a badge at seven-thirty at night. That you... the closer you get. I mean, you know, I've been doing it for a long time and, you know, when you look at these things and you say, neither the minimal work that we do, you know, identity, identifying ourselves is very important.
Would, uh, why don't you give us a little snapshot of your time and as a...
I spent twenty years in New Hampshire as a police officer. I've risen to the rank of lieutenant.
If I... if I could, I'm... I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt if... if I could. What we have, uh, on the agenda tonight is a... is a... an invoice issue and I think what we're getting into is a debate about constable powers. And I would suggest that we, uh, set aside at least a half an hour at our next meeting to debate the possible expansion of constable powers. Uh, if there's not consensus on that, we can seek a motion. Do we have consensus on a... on a postponement?
Till the twentieth or whatever the...
Till our next meeting.
Can I ask a question or is this...
Yes.
I just had a quick question. If we're asking Paul to work while you're figuring out long-term what his position, what his job title's gonna be, what his function's gonna be in town, I think that at the very least, as far as support goes, we should show support because, I mean, as of this week, who knows how long these things will take before we nail down exactly his job title. But I think as far as the board and as far as the town goes, we're expecting something of him, of Paul. I would say if something happened, then hey, where's Paul? I mean, we're... we're putting faith in him. At the very least, he's requesting a uniform. I don't know what we pay for paper in here, but I think for a uniform, we're not... it's not like we're rolling out the red carpet. He's got... he's putting himself between who knows what and everyone else. And I feel to even... You... I don't know what... I know we spend money in this town and I know that people worry about money in this town, but you're talking about a whole separate thing and we're not talking long-term. You know, of course, yes, we have to figure out what the job's... but if you're expecting him to perform a job tomorrow morning, I'd say he deserves a shirt. If he's expecting to be identified, it's his... I don't even wanna get that deep into it, but he wouldn't be here requesting a shirt if he thought he'd get away with a badge. I... I don't see what we're here for this long. We're expecting something of Paul again. If he did... if he did perform it, believe me, we'd all be here looking for something. And I think at the very least, he deserves it, and that's my opinion.
Um, again, my... my opinion is we've... we've had a constable in the sh... in the town for a long time. Uh, they've had a two hundred dollar a year budget. This is a request to expand that budget by a factor of ten. I think that's more than a, uh, a question of budget.
For the uniforms. And that was knocked down to two hundred dollars a few years ago because of the prior constable. Uh, that wasn't always at two hundred. It had a... it had a funded budget.
Alright, let me... let's... alright, is there a motion to, uh, approve an invoice for the constable?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the purchase of the uniforms minus the fire... I mean, minus the firearms for the constable and just first and second constable. At least get the uniforms out of the way and the badge.
Second.
Okay.
And do we know what that total is?
Okay, now. Yeah, I just want... I want, Paul, let's go down that...
Eight hundred and eleven dollars?
I have the, uh, the eight hundred and eleven, eighty-eight. So that's your short... two short sleeve shirts. So that's one each for you, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And then one each long sleeves.
Right.
And then a pair of pants for each of you. About times four.
So it's gonna be two... two long sleeve, two short sleeve.
Yeah, but what about pants?
We have it over on the other side.
Why does that go times four?
Too short, too long, two pants for two people.
Yeah, but why do you have to have two pairs of pants? You're not out there that...
Well, I mean, if we're out there doing a traffic detail, if we're doing an event in town and they're standing out there for a few hours or five, six hours, they get pretty bungy.
This is four pairs of pants?
I'll just play devil's advocate for budget.
Yeah. Two for him and two for Bob.
Oh, okay.
Everything's by four.
Town have to pay for cleaning these?
This is gonna be wash and wear. Throw them in the washing machine.
So eight hundred and eleven, eighty-eight for uniforms.
And the badges are eighty-five each if it's standard? Any... how many do you need?
Two each. One for the outer garment and one for the shirt.
Plus...
Sixty-three, twenty.
Four times... four times what? Eighty-five?
Three forty.
So just realize this, that we have an elected two-year position, so these will be good for two years. And then we don't know who will be elected in two years, so we will budget again in two years for this, uh, because we have different shapes and sizes. And so if these are wash and wear, they're essentially your item. The town is buying you your items.
Can we get the... the motion nailed down? We're trying to make a motion, purchase uniforms and badges for constable for eight hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents, plus four times eighty-five dollars. Is there any more to that?
Well, the jackets, a hundred and thirty-nine each.
Plus...
Embroidery is another fifty, or...
Hundred and thirty-nine for jackets, times how much?
Plus the embroidery for another fifty, so that's a hundred and eighty-nine. Hundred and ninety, two of them. And then baseball caps.
What... what is your motion, Mitch?
Uh...
Before, I've got a hundred and... eight hundred and eleven, eighty-eight. Badges... Four times eighty-five.
Uh, patches, I'm not sure about that, but the... maybe two jackets instead of four. What's the embroidery for? Is that just to have the state logo?
The other patch on the arms.
Two times one thirty-nine.
And then the patch. Two... two batches at fifty bucks each.
Uniforms, badges for constables at...
Caps.
Caps?
Pushing a thousand, aren't we?
Yeah.
I mean, the caps are...
That... Tim, do you have the one-time setup fee for the badges is two hundred and eighty-five dollars plus?
No, that's if we were doing the change of the... that's only if we were doing a change for coal haul on a badge or something.
Gotcha.
My budget would just come out of, Margie?
Uh, the board's gonna have to decide.
Yeah, it'll have to come... it's over budget, so it'll come out of the fund balance.
Come out of, uh...
He's, uh...
Safety somewhere.
It's not budgeted, so it... it'll come out of the fund balance.
It'll be posted to the constable's budget. You'll have it overrun there.
Sorry, I can't find caps on here. Where is that?
Last, uh, hat.
Hats, okay. Local purchase?
There's no price. We just order those.
I don't have a price on that, so I'm going to, uh, call the motion, uh, purchase uniforms and badges at one eighty... eight hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents, plus four times eighty-five dollars, plus two times one thirty-nine, plus two times fifty. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. The motion is not agreed to. The vote is two, three, zero. Now do I have consensus to put this, uh, wider discussion of constable powers on the next agenda?
Sure.
Yes. Please.
Thank you, Paul. Request to hire attorney for tax sale, Burton Snow.
I'll try to make this call. I, um, I have to have your permission to hire an attorney. I... I could run a tax sale myself, but with all my laws and changes, it's not very smart for a tax collector to try to run his own tax sale. And, uh, I hire Kevin O'Toole, who specializes in that, so he's quite efficient. You see, he's naming... well, you see a lot of tax sales and you can be sure he's one who's handling it. I have, I sent... I usually send twenty-five to thirty people to him. He sends out a demand letter, giving them thirty days, and a lot of people do respond from that. This year, I've been running it late in here, but the trouble is that it runs into your next tax season, so you... you have a tax sale and you immediately have another tax due. And that... that kinda messes things up. So I didn't send twenty-five or thirty, I sent, um, fourteen. And the one paid up, one filed bankruptcy. Had to pull that out. And, uh, I think there's another one to pay. So I'm down now to, at the present time, there's eleven people owing thirty-four thousand dollars that are, uh, with the attorney. And I started warning people in February and every month after that, I told them, "This is what's going to happen." They probably didn't believe me. And I have, uh, it's people that they've never... they haven't done anything, uh, they've been hired to communicate with, or they made some arrangement. I offer everyone an arrangement when I send the first notice to them. A lot of people take advantage of it and they follow it. And, uh, I have probably, uh, another twenty or twenty-five thousand that later on, I probably will do something with that. Made arrangements, they didn't keep it.
So how much do you need, uh, how much attorney time do you need? So how much do you need, how much attorney time do you need?
It will not cost the town anything, uh, normally, unless the town was to bid off something. They might have a small fee involved. But the attorney, it's a 15% fee he charges, it's added to the tax bill. You've got taxes, penalty, interest, you guys right now that have been done up. He charges 15%, that's by statute. Then you have the banner publishing costs. They can run anywhere from $75 to $90. You have to send, you have to post that in paper three consecutive weeks. Um, there's other small charges like the filing fee with the town's work and other things. But the person that bids on the property, they pay all of it.
Oh, so it's a part, his attorney's fees are part of the proceeds of the tax sale?
Right. There's usually little or no cost to the town at all. Sometimes these demand letters he sends out are $20. At times, I, I've just paid him for those to get out of my fee. But that's...
Are you asking us to proceed with a tax sale?
I'm asking you for authority to, it's in handbook which said, I have to have your authority to hire an attorney.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't come in before I sent these out because who knows what's gonna be, you know, when June 8th comes is when the 30 days is up, then I'll know which ones are going to go to tax sale. And I just need the authorization to, to hire. In a sense, he's working on now, but not, he's not officially hired until the tax sale proceedings start.
I'll make a motion to allow Merton Snow to hire attorney for the tax sale based on the responses from the letters sent out 28 days ago or 24 days ago.
Yeah, these are, let's see, these were sent out on May 6th, and the amounts are to be paid by June 8th, and then he will begin tax sale proceedings.
Motion to authorize Merton Snow to hire an attorney to proceed to tax, to hire an attorney to proceed to tax sale based on responses to letters from delinquent taxpayers.
Second.
Any more discussion?
I just, Mer, would you just explain to him that once a person is, bids on it and they have one, one full year?
You have some new people, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
We'll hold the sale here.
Yep.
You, two people, and you'll take two checks, first and second bidder. And as long as his check is good, the first bidder gets it. Now, he cannot go, he cannot even go near that property for a year. He just hands off. The person lives there, stays there. And they have, at any time, they can, if they can come up with the money, they, they pay it to the attorney, they get off the hook, the tax sale is stopped, it's still their property. But if one year goes by and they haven't paid, then the bidder gets almost like a quick claim D. And that's their property. It's up to them. If someone's living there, they've got to take care of them, get them out of there and so forth.
But the person that owes the taxes, when he pays, he has to pay everything. He has to pay the 15%, all his half days, everything.
He, he, yeah, because you see, say you bid, I've seen one time, $50,000 and the tax is 10. The $40,000 is put in escrow. Now, if that person gains the property, that $40,000 goes to the taxpayer. That's their money, any, any overage. But they can pay back what is the bid, plus 1% interest at, at any time, and they will keep their property.
Up to a year from the date of the sale.
I'd say 20% of the ones that I've sold probably redeemed it. The rest of them, for some reason, just let it go. That's basically the way it works.
Is it all, in some cases, you're actually bidding on, if it's a large parcel of land, they actually bid on, how much land would they take? That's the way I remember one done that way, but is that not done anymore?
That hasn't been worked, I think that...
That was Paul Jepson's.
There was a change in the laws, I guess, now.
Okay.
You know, you've got, you've got a house, two acres, that's your home set, but you've got 40 acres, that, that whole thing is for sale.
Okay, all right, yep.
But there's little things that could change every year. That's why I don't, Paul, you actually run the tax sale and sell.
You do, yep.
But it was a much simpler time then.
Jay, did you have a color?
Uh, no question. I just want to point out that I have been since tax sales and Mr. O'Doo, I think is me.
O'Doo?
Yeah, he, he is very good about explaining exactly what the ramifications of what you're buying and what can happen and so forth, and it's something that it's really not easy to do. I encourage you to get them, get them there.
Okay.
I think he probably handles every town in, you know. If you, if you just hired another attorney, I did that once, and, because I didn't know who to go with. It took a long time because Paul had to find out everything about the tax sale. This guy, that's all he does. Well, he does, he does other things, but specializes in that.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, zero.
Which time, when the sale is coming up, I will come back and get questions.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Merton. Uh, item 12, solar, proposed solar projects. I, I budgeted some time just to discuss the solar projects that are coming at us. We've seen one formal proposal, and another company has pitched to us and have not given us their formal proposal yet. I don't believe we've actually asked for it. And it sounded like, from an email that came out the other day, another company is looking for the, an opportunity to bid as well, so maybe a third company. The, the idea is that a company will come in, these solar companies are looking to find land that they can put solar installations on. There are a lot of incentives, Green Mountain Power incentives, federal incentives to invest in solar right now. And they're looking for places to do it. We have a landfill cap that we're not allowed to do anything on, except that the state, according to one of the presenters, is very willing to approve solar installations on landfill caps. So much so, they claim, this presenter claimed that it could get installed this season, which is phenomenal to me, if we decided to move forward that quickly. I have talked to a couple of school board officials. One of the issues with the installation is that it has, we essentially get all our, most of our, our incentive for doing this is in electricity credits. And we're pretty much obligated to use the electricity that comes from the installation. And the proposal would generate around $45,000 per year in electricity credits.
That's where 50 KW, right? 150?
150 kilowatt insulation, right. Which is what was first proposed. The town uses about $25,000 in electricity. The first, first entity we thought of as a, as a partner was the school. I checked with the school. Their electricity bill is $30,000 a year, and so between the two of us, we cover that. And I talked to the principal, he's agreeable without knowing the details. I talked to a couple of school board members. They are agreeable with reservations, and it's the same, really the same reservations that we should have too, which is that it's a 20-year commitment, and you want to make sure you think through any 20-year commitments, because things could change. One of the things could change is, you know, it's unlikely, but school consolidation is often a threat around here. If that school was consolidated away, we might find ourselves with, you know, $25,000 energy bill and a $45,000 payment that we're owed to Green Mountain Power for the electricity that's coming off of that grid. While I think that's probably a solvable problem in the unlikely event that it should happen, it's still something to keep our eyes open about. The other thing that I noticed in reading through the proposal that had occurred to me as, and something I wasn't clear on, is the first presenter that we talked to talked about an, an energy credit of 10 to 18% depending on the lease. And I didn't know what that meant, but reading Sovereign Solar's agreement, it looks like the lease is, they're, they're proposing that to pay us a lease for the land of $2,500 a year. So I presume that with Sovereign, as well as the other company, Integrated Solar, I believe, we could negotiate that to, you know, less lease money and more energy credit if we were so, so inclined. But that was, I believe, the source of that 18 to 20% variance that we didn't hear from, from Sovereign. So that's kind of where my, my state of mind is on it now.
I thought it was, the contract read was every seven years it was renewed. We had the option to purchase the installation every seven years, because that's when the tax profitability, profitability of the project is finished for the investors. And then the, the issue is, is that then either new investors buy that company or we could purchase.
Yeah, they, they write off for the depreciation and the tax credits that we have. After seven years, basically, it's, it's used up for them, they can't, they don't have any more deductions, so they would go out and try to get another install somewhere so they can get the seven years again. It's for people who have like a million dollar tax bill and are looking for some write-offs.
Right.
And he's, uh, so, I mean, it's every seven years, and if, at the end, if we decide to buy it, we get all the, we get all the electricity and...
We, well, we can't.
No, we...
We can't get any tax benefit from it.
No, because we're nonprofit. So that's why they sell it to another company.
Right.
That would depreciate it at 50% of the initial cost, and then they depreciate that for another seven years, and then six, the last term, he said would probably be six years if that were the case. And then he would say the last, and pretty much it's 20 years, they have a lifespan of up to 40 years, 25 to 40 years or something.
Yeah.
And I think it's a good thing for the town. If we got the school to do it, if the school, if we produce more energy than we use, there's other nonprofits in the area I'm sure we could, uh, partner with to make it happen for these, for this to go forward.
So do we solicit more bids, more companies? Do they come to us? Do we have a time period?
Coming to us, it seems.
Yeah, they've come to us. I think it's probably just a matter of us emailing them and saying, send me, send us your agreement so we can compare it to these other guys.
I can, I can do that with Katrina if you want.
I don't remember that we had an option every seven years.
Yeah.
I thought we got an option at seven years. You, you definitely remember it's every seven?
I, I, I thought the first company said it was the seven-year mark.
Because that's when the depreciation, most people take the depreciation for seven years and tell, on top of the tax credit. And that's pretty much...
Yeah, okay.
They can't take it out of there, so they don't, the tax credit's not worth it. It's a depreciation and the tax credit that makes it worthwhile for these companies.
Right, it was the every seven years that I was questioning. I know there's an option at seven years to buy it. I'm not sure there's one at, at 14 as well.
We need to solicit more bids?
In my mind, there's a couple of things we should do. We should solicit the other companies that are proposing to do it, see how, see exactly what their agreements are.
I can give a...
We should probably check references and see if these installations are, you know, really in Vermont with all the clouds producing the kind of energy that they claim they are.
Didn't he say he would give us a list of all of his clients that he's worked with, the Sovereign person? Or said you?
I, I think it'd be, obviously, it would be great to go to a town that's already up and running and see what the benefits are and negatives.
And we talked about Rattleboro, taking a trip over to Rattle.
Yeah, but the Rattleboro town is not running. It's a private co-op that's being formed, and I don't think it's up and running yet, do you?
How about that one in Pownamook Track?
Yeah.
They have one in Townsend as well. That's huge.
That's huge.
That's totally different.
Thousand feet in here, don't you?
Is it? The one, one in Pownamook, they're talking about the one in Pownamook. That certainly is not a municipality.
No, 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 I know that's private, but I was just wondering if you could find out, you know, what the, how much they make down there.
Rutland?
It's not up and running yet. Oh, well, no. CBPS has a field, but the, the one in, outside of Rutland, north of Clarendon, is not up and running yet. It's not even, it's almost completed.
Well, I know Sovereign Inc. said they'd give us a list of everybody they've installed with this program, and that's what we need to see.
Yeah, I still have concerns about old equipment. You know, the technology, which changes by the minute.
Yeah, well, that's one of the things we should keep our eyes about, open about in terms of, you know, a 20-year agreement, you know?
Exactly.
If there's a technological breakthrough in 10 years and energy drops, it seems unlikely, but it's possible, then we would be stuck in a 20-year agreement to pay higher energy than other people might be.
Fusion.
Michael?
Mr. Chairman, as we were supposed to press.
Yes.
I had some concerns about, first of all, about liability. If things go wrong in our land, which is a very expensive procedure, the cap, and a lot of legal ramifications of, in the town does own more land with its other exposure up here out in Howard Park, quite a bit, quite a bit of solar up there. If you wanted the location, the town to do this in, it was net metering, it doesn't have to be any one particular place. And I just wanted to bring up something I brought up before, before the whole board, which was that we visited a site just west of the Brunswick Harley-Davidson shop in New York State, we call it Troy Harley-Davidson. They put up a structure, and a company came in and covered it with solar panels. All the company wants out of it is seven, seven cents bonus for the number of years. The owner there did not pay, they have the panels installed, he did not buy the panels. This one company put them up there, and they get all of the money for the electricity. It makes, to me, it makes in a way, I know you're balancing out construction costs for a structure, but they, they went big, they made it kind of garage, like an open garage underneath the panels, but the panels is getting ruined, so it's kind of shady, kind of dry, not really dry. But it seems like $5,000 a year is chump change compared to all, all the value of the electricity at whatever price. I don't believe electricity's going down by 15 cents, you know. Just, just, I think that there's more looking into, instead of jumping into the first set of offers that came to us, you know, that's their first offer, and that maybe not be the best offer.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we all agree that we're not jumping into anything, but, but we are intrigued by the possibility, and, yes, we have, as I said, any 20-year commitment requires a lot of thought.
And we don't have a solid proposal from anybody, do we?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, we do?
Sovereign, yes.
Oh, that one, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The net metering, for the next two years until 2016, if you put a new, if you generate solar electricity, they pay you 6 cents more per kilowatt hour than what the town average, average customer pays, 14 cents. So they pay 21 cents kilowatt hour for what we generate.
And that's... So it's only two years?
No, but it's for 10 years. No, but it's for 10 years. But that sun sets at 2016. And the guy from Sovereign last, a couple of weeks ago, said that he expects that to be renewed, but who knows? So, I mean, if, we don't do it now, we don't do it next year, these things are definitely going to dry up by 2016, 2017. There won't be any incentive for anybody to assist and do anything like this. So, just something to think about.
What would happen if they start that natural gas pipeline in here, putting that in for power?
Um...
I'm just wondering what that would do to solar power rates and things.
Yeah. Want to stick, try proposing to come down to Rutland?
Yeah.
Is that, is GMP buying that or is...
I don't know. I was just, I just thought of the, the pipeline and they're using a lot of that nationwide.
Yeah, I don't see...
To generate power.
I don't see power going down anytime soon.
No. No, I mean, I just wanted to throw in that.
Yeah. I mean, someone's going to make some money out of it for sure, but I don't, it won't be us.
Won't be us.
But my shoot from the hip answer is that that's one of the things that you contemplate that could change in 20 years. If, if natural gas were piped in here, the energy picture could change.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Jenna Fraschurki. Clarifying question as far as who benefits from this. It sounds like it's the town offices and kind of governmental kind of buildings and structures on the school? Or am I to understand that residents of Shaftesbury, like residential customers, will receive some kind of benefit in their electricity costs?
Only indirectly. The town and the school would benefit by 10, 10 to 18%, we think, less energy bill. And so, that would be less taxes we would have to collect to pay that energy bill. But it's to the tune of $5,000 a year. So, it's not, it's not going to be a tax bonanza.
Okay.
It's not like a co-op what they're doing over in Brattleboro where the town, all the people in the town own it and, or the people that signed up in the co-op own it. That's not the deal we're talking about here with the landfill. But it's, it is an option too, something to look at. And he spoke on that last meeting too. He did, you know, could band together with 15, 20 years, you know, half the town and...
And just want, and just to clarify again, what is the cost to the town?
He said a hundred, what'd he say, a hundred?
The cost for the installation?
No.
Didn't he say 150 KW is about a hundred?
There's no cost.
The cost to the town is nothing. That's, that's the deal. We're, we're giving them, we're leasing them the land. And they assume all responsibility, all installation costs, all maintenance, take it away in 20 years if we don't want it anymore. It's all electricity for land deal.
Okay. It sounds like it would be difficult to go wrong.
I think the consensus is it would be. But again, like I said, 20 years is a long time. If the energy picture changed, it could be different. Art?
You have to remember that the extra electricity that we produce is actually bought back at a higher rate. So, somebody's ended up paying for that. You understand what I'm saying?
No, say that again.
They have to, they have to pay, they have to pay seven cents over the 14 buyback that they're going to resell to somebody else. Somebody's going to pay that higher price.
Mm-hmm.
I do remember them saying they have to be very careful not to overproduce.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody that's buying electricity is actually going to pay a little bit higher price. Now, not seven cents, but that, the power, the electric companies are being forced to pay a higher rate for this stuff as an incentive. So, somebody's going to pay a little bit more for electricity.
Yes. But recall, at least as explained by Pete from Sovereign, was that Green Mountain Power's incentive is, this is essentially how they're going to avoid building a power plant to cover future demand. And certainly, if Green Mountain Power built a power plant, we'd all pay for that.
It needs to be explained that way. Okay?
Yeah.
I sense consensus that we continue to investigate these proposals and that we're, we're thinking that we're probably inclined to do it, but we need to do some more homework.
I'll email Katrina at Integrated Solar Applications and see if she can send some sort of agreement over.
Okay. I was putting that down as an action for Margie, just so that all the company's agreements come into the town office first, then she can distribute it.
Yeah, I don't even have the formal Sovereign proposal. I know we've met, but for some reason, I don't have a copy.
Oh, you don't?
Isn't there a copy in Dropbox? Where did I get mine?
Did he email it to, maybe?
But that's, you know...
I've got it.
Not to worry about why. Just, I will get it.
Yeah. Probably best if those things cluster in, in the town first.
And I, because Mitch, you were taking the lead and Bill was taking the lead. So, I'm not in direct contact with these folks.
Do you want me to just copy you and email her and ask her to send it, to respond to all? So, you get it.
Aye.
All right. That's fine. Let me change that to a Margie-Mitch action. And I'll put my name there too, to remind me that we have another, got another email thread that sounded like somebody else was interested in making a proposal. I'll have to read it to get more careful.
I don't know if I got it.
The only other element of this is I'd like to make the zoning administrator more aware so that we button down the local review process. Would there be any zoning review from installations? I mean, it's a PSB proposal.
I think, well, Sovereign sounded like they would take care of that and that they expect fast track from the state.
Well, that's why I have to go back and read all the rules.
The local zoning administrator does have to give permits.
Okay.
However, since the town's impressed me, I think it's pretty much a given.
Okay. Are we ready to move on?
Yep.
Howard Park Maintenance and Repairs. Last week, last meeting, we heard from Walter Merritt and also Art brought to our attention that there's some maintenance and repair issues at Howard Park. The select board had a meeting out there the following Thursday. We noted a number of things that are in fact efficient and in need of attention at Howard Park. I have taken my notes, written them up, made suggestions, just my first blush at what we should try to do now, including what we should try to fix for this season, and then how we should prioritize those things going forward. In particular, top of the list, playground equipment was in pretty sad shape. We have actually put caution tape around the playground equipment.
Which was taken down the next day.
It's already been taken down?
Seriously.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Walter Merritt let me know that the next day somebody had taken it all off.
All right. Well, we should try to put it up again, see if it gets taken down again. And then, but I do have as my number one priority is to have the road crew remove that equipment. So...
Absolutely.
We got the rec committee here. Should we invite them?
Oh, yes. Rec committee. I'm sorry. I was going to go through my list unless y'all had something you wanted to instruct us with before I do that. Did you get the list?
No.
Oh.
No, I didn't get that.
All right.
Do you want to take a look at this?
Sure.
Everybody could take a look at this.
Dana Ruggie?
Dana Ruggie, Rec Committee, and Helen Olney.
Helen?
Helen, yes.
Aye.
These were pictures that were taken, it was back in '08 or '09. We were having some issues down at the park. And we have some pictures of the bathroom that you had questioned about water pipes.
Right. One of the things that's on the list is that the water fountain was vandalized and just taken out instead of replaced. And I have proposed that we replace that water fountain. And this shows that panel removed. It shows access to the, the essentially hidden wall between the ladies and the men's restroom where a plumber can get in there and work on those pipes. So, yes, it can be reinstalled.
This was from 2007, '08, you said?
It was about 2008, 2009.
What's the truck in the, in the field here? Is that somebody down there playing or...
I'm not sure. There could have been Walter down there.
Oh. Never know who you'll catch down there.
Never know who's going to be in the picture. Okay. There was also a question about the concession stand and who owns the buildings. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
And I had looked back in the notes. And this is from January 22nd, 2009, notes that were taken from the Rec Committee. And this has to do with the standard usage. Take a look at that. So, it's basically saying that the buildings that are on our land belong to us.
Right.
They can be used, but it's our property. People that use it need to maintain it.
People that use it need to maintain it?
Well, if they're going to be using the inside facility, then they need to clean up after themselves. This is just common courtesy.
Oh, yes, yes. But not repair damaged wood and paint it?
No.
Yeah.
I'm thinking sports teams.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I think all of us suspected that that was the case, but it was...
I went back and looked.
There was some, some issue there. So, yes, thank you for...
Is that being done? The people who use the facility, are they...
They're cleaning, yeah, they're cleaning up after themselves.
Okay, good.
It wasn't that case in the past, but in the near, you know, previously, like over the last few years, they've been very, very good.
So, who currently uses it?
It's basically Little League that uses the facility. They use the concession stand when they're selling, selling things during the games.
But there's also soccer.
Soccer, yeah.
Now, it was pointed out to me that at one time, the agreement was that either you paid $20 or $200 a year for the use of the thing, or you provided a work party and that you've changed your policy where everybody has to pay $200.
Yeah. What we had originally done is there, they had a choice. They could either do work, opening up the facilities and then helping with closing it down, or any kind of maintenance work that needed to be done around the facilities and the entire park, basically sweat equity. If they knew they weren't going to be able to do that, then they would donate $200 as a maintenance fee. What we found was happening is nobody was doing anything. And we were doing everything. And we said, "This isn't right." And so, now we have the field maintenance fee back again. And there is a fee schedule that the Rec Committee has developed. Mitch, I think you have that. I gave that to you when I left the information for you at the town offices this morning.
Oh, I haven't got, oh, I haven't picked it up yet.
Ah, I had it there.
Oh, it's, is it down there in the box?
Oh, it is. It is. No, yeah, right, right on the counter for you. But the fee schedule that we had developed is basically subject to change. It's a flexible fee schedule. But those are the starting, starting fees that we're dealing with. So, that's the way we're doing it now. It's, some of the organizations or the people that use our fields, we have to be quite flexible with. We can't hold them to a stringent exact amount because we know that it's unrealistic for that particular group. So, we lower it or eliminate it. But we have that BLR group, the Blue Lollipop Road, that usually uses our fields for fundraising. And it benefits Mount Anthony High School for scholarships. So, we don't charge them for using our fields or the facilities or anything. That's our donation to them as the town.
When, when was this policy instituted, the $200 fee?
It had been a number of years ago. And then it was eliminated. And now, we instituted it again for this season.
When did the season begin?
It began in, I guess, is that like the end of April?
So, the people who are using it knew that in April.
Oh, yes. What I do at the beginning, beginning of the seasons of the people that I know that are going to be using the facilities, I send out a copy of the revised handbook. Any changes that have been done to the handbook, they get that. They get a cover letter with that. And on the cover letter, it says what the usage fee is. Big bow.
And was there a pushback for any of them?
No.
I think, I know there was. The Little League made the comment, Bennington Little League, which is all, used to be North Shaft and now is part of Bennington, Jeff Metcalf said, "Why does the town give us $600 every year and then take back $200?"
Mm.
When they also go up there and do a work party. I mean, they, they have to, they get the field ready. I don't think Walter Merritt does the infield as far as, as the baselines and the bases and all that sort of stuff. I think they take, they do all that themselves. I know they do it at the North Bennington one. So, so, his comment was, "We're doing a work party," which was the agreement before. All of a sudden, they're being charged $200 and gave us 600 of it. So, why are you asking for 200 back?
Okay. I think that's something we could, we could take into consideration under the, just like you were saying, some, that fee is not hard written in stone. We could consider changing that for the Little League.
Yes, I don't have that scheduled. I...
It's okay. Yeah. The way we were looking at it is they're setting up that baseball field for use by themselves. I mean, other people, I'm sure, can come in and use it when they're not using it. But it's basically for the benefit of their, their teams, their Little League organization. So, if they weren't there, would it be hurting us any? You know, are we really benefiting from what they're doing? The kids are, the kids are. I don't know where they draw the children from. I'm sure they draw them from Shaftesbury. They draw them from Bennington, maybe North Bennington, the surrounding areas. But they're doing it to benefit themselves. That's the way we were approaching it. You know, they maintained it because this is what they need for their sport. Just like when the soccer people start using the fields. They line the fields. They do all of that because that's what they need. They need their boundaries. They need the things lined up for their sport. So, they take care of what they need for their games. Yeah.
I know in my hometown, the Little League fields, all the teams that were, were there were sponsored by a business in the, in the area, you know, from Telescope to, you know, Scotty's to, you know, whatever. There's all the, any, all these, they were sponsoring. That would pay a lot of the dues to maintain their fields when I was growing up. I don't know if we have that base here or not.
Yeah, I don't know how they do it. I don't see it.
I mean, we could have a Peckham team and a Whitman team and a Bernstein team.
That's right.
The Manikins, you know?
And you see that in other, other areas.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, even, I mean, some of the, some of the people that sponsor teams were not very big businesses. They just did it for the community.
For the community. Yeah, for the kids.
Pollins.
Which is a wonderful idea. That's right.
All right. Can we go back to the prioritized list of repairs? This is what I really wanted to accomplish tonight, is get agreement on what we should try to do for this season in terms of repairs. What I'm suggesting is, we have the road crew remove the equipment later and actually, and right now, is seeking a grant to replace that equipment.
Yes, yes.
We have a drainage issue on the soccer field coming off the, out of the forest where the water's piling up. Culverts in need of repair, ditches in need of repair. That's something that the road crew can do quickly. Down at the parking lot, there's a culvert and a ditch where there's a stream. There... used to be posts protecting that ditch to keep cars from driving into it, the posts are gone. We can have the, the road crew put posts in there.
Is that on the driveway into the parking lot?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, right before you get to the parking lot. There's one post left, and according to Walter, at least one car has actually made it into the ditch, instead of hitting a post.
I'm meeting with Terry on Thursday morning, let me take him up and show him those three things.
Yes, okay. Removing broken glass from the lights on the tennis court, that seems to me a safety issue. I don't think there's a lot of glass left there. Maybe have Terry look at that. I don't know if it's worth trying to hire a cherry picker to do, maybe you can just...
Yeah, I don't know how else you would get...
Ask him how good his throwing arm is, maybe he can throw a rock at him and get him to come down.
Anybody with a bucket truck.
Yeah.
Mike just left.
Mike has a bucket truck?
Yeah.
Maybe he would donate. What we, what my concern is that there's dangling pieces of glass there that could fall and hurt somebody. The main entrance, the gate got crashed, we need to secure the main entrance. We need to secure all the main entrance, and I'll, and I'll mention later the unauthorized entrance, I believe, before we start doing very much in the way of repairing things that have been broken by vandals in the past. Ken, I liked your idea of a cable on the, on the gate, instead of a gate, because it seems like it can stop cars. But we should look and see, you know, what, what we need to do in terms of, you know, enforcing, are the posts that are there still good enough? Can cars get around those posts to get in?
Well, I think that they're on the, aren't they on their little pentals, those posts? And they just pound them into the thing? I mean, someone with a hammer just pounds them out, and they're down.
Yeah, the posts there, I think are big enough.
Big enough, but...
But if you put the cable up, it'd be all right. But the, but the fence there, or the gate there, they just disabled it.
Yeah, yeah, so, secure the main entrance. Walt says that there's a way to get into the park off of Buck Hill, that cars have gotten in and driving around without going through the main gate, come down that...
Must be north of the main gate.
Yes.
Down through that field where there was a bonfire?
I think so.
Yeah. He said there used to be logs piled up there, or positioned there, that made it all but impossible to drive a car in through that point, but they've rotted away.
Some big, big stones up there or something?
Yeah, I suggested installing logs or rocks might be a good idea, or digging a ditch that would stop a car from going through there.
It's just, a ditch is just a test for their truck.
Then...
Is that something that perhaps Art might mention to Terry?
What? Yes.
At this other legal entry point?
Yep, I'm writing it down.
Thank you.
Okay, so one through...
I think we have to specify what to block it off with.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll get his opinion.
Those are all things that the road crew can do as part of their summer projects. I suggest that putting a water fountain back in is something we should do this summer. In my mind, you know, where you've got soccer and baseball and hiking and restrooms, water is just a basic human necessity, that we should have that there.
That would, that would include, we'd have to get all the water tested and re...
Oh, it does anyways.
It has been.
It has been?
It has been.
Because of the concession stand.
Oops. The more it's used, the better it is, I'm sure.
And we got a good report on it, so.
Yeah, that's tested every year, very face to face.
Good. Where's my item eight?
Eight was on the first page, seek grants from the...
Oh, okay, so that's happening. Fixing the basketball rim that's dangling, that's really more of a cosmetic issue to me. It, there's lots of basketball rims out there, but it really seems run down to see a broken basketball net hanging there, and I...
Why, I'm sorry, I agree, but why have the road crew do that, Tim? Why doesn't Walter, he does maintenance, he could do that.
That's a good idea.
That's fine, yeah. And I thought, you know, there are basketball rims, you know, on the tennis court that probably don't need to be there, but it may be harder to get those rusted bolts off than to just buy a new one, I don't know, but that was just a suggestion.
I think that's a good idea.
It is a good idea.
Use the ones we have, cut off the bolts if needed.
Oh, this is PDF, okay, so I can't edit it, okay. Yeah, we can have Walter do that. And then we get into stuff that I don't feel is as urgent. The next one on the list is the batting cage that's in the shed. It would be a simple thing to put, I think, put a lock back on that and make sure that it's secure and...
Is that used? The batting cage?
It works.
It works.
Yeah, the question is, who?
I don't know if it's used or not.
Yeah, that's, that's a $64 question.
The block, lock is broken every time, if someone puts a lock on, it's broken. It's either hinges...
But, but is it used by Little League?
That's a quest, good question.
That's the question, we don't know if they still use it.
And who, who owns it? Who, who?
It must have, I would assume, I could be wrong, that it would be Little League, because it's a batting cage.
Yeah.
So you wanna work with the kids on their batting skills.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the point is, is anything on that property, we, we end up being responsible.
Well, that's, yeah, that was, it's an expensive piece of equipment.
Yes, it is.
So the question is, if we could establish ownership, not ownership, but the source of it, the origin of it, and then try to figure out, you know, try to maintain it, and then is it just a simple security issue, or is it the whole structure itself?
It's security, it's primarily, and then the structure.
Yeah, I suggested it's a, a security issue, well, to, we'd rather not have the thing stolen, but also, it's probably the kind of thing that should be used to under adult supervision, and if the door's not locked, and some kid could open it, start trying to, you know, put a baseball in it, stick his hand in it, and then we'd be liable for...
I think, I think they should be ours when it might be available, and that's way, someone will be there to set it up, and if the kids wanna practice their batting, they come down at that time, from, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, from five to six or something, where someone will be there, I think that's a better plan than just...
Let me talk to Jeff Metcalf and find out just...
I was gonna say, Ken, I would go connect the...
But I definitely don't think the kids should be...
Find out the origin of that?
Under supervision.
Or would Jeff know? Jeff might know.
Jeff would probably be a better source for that, because he would have contacts within the Little League, so he'd be able to backtrack.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The tennis courts are near end of life, the surface on them is, Walter claims that they have never been resurfaced.
No, they have not.
That that's the original 40-year-old surface that's on there?
Yes, it is.
Boy, we should try to find a company that did that again, to do it again.
Yeah.
That's, but we should, we should, Margie, you said you had a grant for, did you say that it was for that?
Playgrounds.
And playground equipment?
Playgrounds, that's the REIT facilities grant, there, I don't know of anything else, and that's a fairly modest grant.
Okay, so we need to either budget or seek a grant to do that?
The tennis court is north of $10,000.
So, so does it need to be resurfaced, or does it need to be cleaned and relined?
Right now, yeah, at some point, it does need to be resurfaced, but repairs to existing cracks and fissures, so they don't get any worse, would be a wonderful thing.
Grass is growing up in the...
Grass is growing, yeah. And that's not good, when you're playing tennis, your foot catches on that, you're gonna go down or twist an ankle.
So this is one of the, one of the proposals that we got?
Yeah, yeah.
For the fill hairline cracks with acrylic crack filler, right way crack repair system for structural cracks.
Right.
Total area receive one coat of acrylic resurfacer, that's $7,000. We have another one for 44, which is fill all hairline cracks with acrylic crack filler, structural cracks, total area receive two coats. So there's a little difference here, like 3,300 bucks.
Unless you're proposing that we do this immediately as an off-budget item, I propose we take up the details of these proposals during budget season in the fall. Just to run down quickly, baseball concession stands and the dugouts, there's some damaged wood on the eaves that needs to be repaired. The, all of the backboards and the rims are rusty, I think they still work, but they look bad, and so that's something else that should be, we should budget for repair or replacement. And the roofs on all those buildings, the concession stand and the restroom, to look at them, they look like they're near end of life, so that's another item that we need to consider at budget season, season. And then also, just all the buildings, if you look at them, you can see white primer starting to show through the paint, so we're gonna have to paint those. So, all those items, since item seven are things that we need to put into a long-term plan, but it sounds like we have consensus to, to do items one through seven and try to get them done this year, including item seven, which would be put in a new water fountain, which would be an off-budget expense.
Would the REIT committee consider a, a work day, where all the organizations that use the park come in to do the painting and the repair, or, you know, like, you know, a fun, you know, a fun weekend or a couple of weekends, the different organizations doing it?
Maybe have a barbecue down there for the...
Use the pavilion.
After, after.
Margie, can I charge you with getting us an estimate on getting that water fountain back in?
Quite frankly, you know, who I think should be doing that would be Walter.
Okay.
And it'd be very simple, because we can work with the water department. He works with Billy Martin.
Yes.
I think we need to clarify what Walter's responsibilities are. He seems to think that, first of all, he can't, can't do all the mowing and trimming that is necessary in the time that the town tells him that he's gonna be paid for. So he ends up doing a lot on his own, just to mow and trim. So then when we come to him and say, you know, fix the basketball thing, do this, do that, I'm getting a little bit of pushback from him, saying, you know, so I think we need to either, in the future, make sure that he has an understanding of what his responsibilities are, and then he's compensated for it, but right now, he doesn't feel that...
Takes him 20 hours to mow the lawn, the fields, and then that's it, that's what he's budgeting.
It takes him more than 20 hours.
Takes him more than that.
And, and the budget says he's only gonna get 20 hours a week, so that's, so we gotta, we have to be careful, please.
You just can't keep loading me up with mechanical repairs, it's so far removed from the essential aspects of what I do.
Okay.
And that can lead to a whole other discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so, one quick question, a clarification, are you suggesting we make this a full-time job, instead of a half 20-hour-a-week job at the...
We already had a scheme in place, Mitch. I had, with this budget, we had anticipated bringing somebody on board for a year-round position, and mostly it was to avoid paying the work, the workers' comp claims, in excess of $2,000 or $3,000 in the winter months that we pay. And it was not gonna be the incumbent maintenance person, because there's no interest there to open and close. And I, I drew up a job description with that in mind, as an integral part of the responsibilities of an overseer. So I circulated and now, in my haze from last week, I know, I shared a draft job description, the REIT committee has reviewed it, but it hasn't, we haven't taken the next step, because I, I really think it merits the board's attention about how we really are gonna do this. I love the idea of sharing highway crews and a lot with and across departments, and a lot of towns do that, but I think that we ought to be able to dock their budget, transfer the cost of their time and involvement, and show the true cost of operating the park. So that would, in my discussions with Terry, I've, because even the time that I asked for help from a landfill, I say, geez, you know, if it's four hours, let me know, and I really, we're gonna post it to Sol waste removal, to help his budget out, because they are, it's across departments. So that's just something else to think about.
So, do you think, because they do have some overruns, normally the town highway has overruns, that if, I mean, during the winter and certain high, high-impact storms and so forth, but during the summertime, there's days where they maybe take one employee and put them over there a day, a week, or two employees?
Oh, I never got that far.
No.
No, no, then you're, then, if we get to that point, the larger question is, do we really need a six-man crew during the summer months? And if we are still waffling back and forth on that number between five, 5.5, and/or six, and maybe we could free up half a body, let's say, you know, a man a, for a day or two a week, to be shared by another department, then that's, that discussion, but I, we had taken it from the budgetary approach, we took it really trying to just manage repairs and maintenance down there in the park, but also we have Cleveland Park, and to tie the two of them together.
We, I mean, I went back through, from 2010 to last year, and in three years or four years, we've increased the budget 30%, went from $9,000 to $12,000, and obviously that's not enough, because of the use and all that stuff that's going on down there. I mean, those, those fields are huge, I mean, I could imagine mowing that. It doesn't just happen. I guess we'll have to deep dive into this in the next budget season.
Yeah, and keep in mind, you know, that we had the town garage as the major focus, and so we kept budget increases across departments very, very minimal, certainly in the last round. So there might be room in this next budget cycle to start reallocating funds.
Recreation and safety go hand in hand, I think they're very complementary, and a constable in a uniform going down there once you make, just passing through, saying, hi kids, how's it going, any problems? I think that's a good idea. I think the recreation and safety are complementary.
So it's okay to ask Walter to, to go ahead and just have somebody put a fountain in at his discretion, or what?
Well, you know, well, I don't want Walter to feel pressured to take this on, I mean, if, if what you're indicating, Art, is that maybe we shouldn't? I just think that, I think they like to work with Billy Martin, so what I could do is just to make sure that we, he's contacted, but he's gonna have to meet with Walter anyway.
Yes, that's right.
No problem.
Yeah.
Well, Mitch...
So I could, I could put a call in.
Mitch whispered in my ear that maybe he or I should just...
Orchestrated.
Do, gather estimates for getting that done.
Sure.
I think...
Billy Martin, the guy's the star, right? Billy Martin, the baseball man, ten Yankees.
I'm wondering if, if the picture that you had of the fountain was like a porcelain tone?
Art, do we have a short-term problem with Walt's compensation at the park that we need to address, or only if we start asking him to get estimates on things?
I'm saying, I'm wondering if it's a different kind?
Okay.
So we're over budget right now on that, for the, for the actuals? We're over budget a little bit right now, but it's only, you know, till the end of the month, I'm sure we can, we can increase it, I mean, this is the, this is for, this is a park right here.
A park, yeah, we've got...
Okay. And then the equipments, you have any problems with that tractor?
Yeah, he has. That's why we have a...
The stone sharpeners, or the blade sharpeners? The stones?
Stones.
No, it's, it's got over 5,000 hours on it.
I'm just wondering if there would be another type of fountain that might be a little more resistant to damage.
Stainless steel?
Yeah, I mean, porcelain, you know, it don't take much break on them.
Or pedestal one rather than a hanging one?
Yeah.
Or both, you know, maybe pedestal underneath the hanger, so it gives a little more stability.
Anything else we need to address tonight about Howard Park?
Can I just mention something about the tennis courts?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Um, I know that we have proposals on resurfacing the tennis courts and things like that, but I think, Art, it was two years ago that you and the Lions were there. They did a magnificent job cleaning up the tennis courts. These are, this is something that has to be done on a yearly basis, because there were trees overhead, the leaves fall into the courts, they start rotting, you get that slime underneath. If you're running around on this stuff, you're going down. And they just cleaned everything up. It was a wonderful, wonderful thing. We got rid of the grass, that was where the cracks were and everything. We fixed up where the, the wires and things went across to the, you know, the tennis players, and it was wonderful. They did a fantastic job, and that's something that needs to be done on an annual basis. And I don't think anything was done this year, was it, Helen?
So, did you just make a power washer?
So, yeah, it was wonderful.
Do you think they would do that again if we asked them to? All right. Can I charge you with?
Yep.
With that?
I'll take that one.
Thank you, Warren.
Is there a bleaching process that also needs to occur after that, Art?
I don't know. We didn't do it, we just...
You can actually put a little Clorox in there, and that'll kill all the mold that's there, so it won't grow. So you have a little separate, a bucket was 10-to-1 Clorox solution, and it works right into the power washer, and it kills all the slime.
Yeah. That should take care of the vegetation that will keep trying to grow the cracks, too.
Anything else?
I just want to say that I have been with the Recreation Committee since it began in one capacity or another, and yes, the tennis courts were top of the line from mid winter end, and they really have done as well.
Did it, did, did the town purchase those? Did the town put those in, or was it some part of the park before it was donated?
This was part, well, the Recreation Committee didn't consist of two or three or four of us. It was perhaps a committee of 25. There was much more funding available at that time, and that was, that was a showpiece. That was a really well-done piece of bark that went in, and it had been cared for and well-used. And, and many, many structures have been used. At one point, it was a feed worth of tennis courts. At one point, there were the lights that you were coin-operated, so that you could play tennis at night. There were all kinds of different things that have happened over the years.
I've been told that, from some people that used it at night, used to go over there and play tennis at night.
At night, so there's glass that's coming from. And so there's just so many different scenarios that can happen, and I think we're on the right track modestly to approach these things again. So, I thank you for your time and ideas and ways that you can bring community together.
That was, that was big federal money in the 70s. Everybody put in tennis courts. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then tennis went out of vogue.
Yeah, it's coming back.
Is it good?
Yes, it is. Rumor has it.
Rumor? We could start it here.
No, it is. Exactly.
And tennis lessons.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And there was stipulations on that money, but it, but there was a lot of, I remember, a lot of Rec money, because there were a lot of playgrounds that were built in the 70s, yeah.
We thank you for all of your input with what direction.
What was the material on that, on that court? It's a rubber-based, macadam type, it's a rubber-based synthetic court? I mean, it's, we had a track field that, they did that, too, a track.
Yeah.
They use the same thing on a track, track...
And it really holds up.
Holds up very well.
But it surfaced well, too. So, we need to do some careful work now.
It needs love. Now, the gentleman that came to, to look at the courts said he never saw courts that were such excellent condition for being outdoor courts and for being so old.
Mm-hmm.
True.
So they're, they were very, very well-done at the time.
Yep.
I guess it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, Beors.
Art, do you need those pictures?
No. I've seen it.
Item 14, Conflict of Interest Action Policy. It's been brought up a couple of times that Ken Harrington should recuse relative to the placement of a garage on land at the transfer station, because he owns property next to the transfer station. He's been disinclined to do that. We've asked him to do that, and he has, on occasion, agreed to it, and the last occasion he agreed, he declined to do that. I reviewed our Conflict of Interest policy, and I hope y'all did, too, and it's pretty clear what happens in a case like that, and that is that we vote and decide whether or not he should recuse himself. And so, I have placed that on the agenda. The question is, should Ken Harrington be disqualified for participating in matters related to locating a town garage at the transfer station site due to a conflict of interest, or the appearance of a conflict of interest, related to his owning land abutting the site? And that's wording almost straight out of our Conflict of Interest policy. In my mind, there is, well, can I have a second for that?
Second.
In my mind, there's, the key definitions are, conflict of interest means a town official or his or her relative, household member, business associate, employer or employee has a direct or indirect personal or financial interest in the outcome of a cause proceeding application or matter pending before the town official or town body on which he holds office. And then it goes into some detail about financial conflict of interest. The other one I think is important to bear in mind is the appearance of a conflict of interest means what a reasonable person having knowledge of all the relevant facts might consider a conflict of interest.
I had told you that I had contacted the Secretary of State's office. I tried that again, and the gentleman did not get back to me today. I'd also stated many times that it was insane for the town of Shasbury to put that garage anywhere except there. And I think I made that present to everybody. So I, for the life of me, cannot see, there's no way, after checking with a real estate person and everything else, that I can get any financial gain or loss, whether everything's being zoned the way it is up there. And I would consider it an infringement of my constitutional rights if I was forced to not be able to vote on that garage.
Well, I believe the, the question here is not your constitutional rights, but our Conflict of Interest policy.
Yeah, it's just my opinion, Tim.
Sure, sure, and we welcome that. Anything else you want to?
I guess there's not much else I can say.
Other comments?
Can we table this until he get, does get a, a opinion from the Secretary of State? Or whoever it is he contacted?
He was the Assistant Secretary of State.
I'm thinking a landowner, whether it's positive, negative, net, it's just, you, basically, you've shot down the town garage twice.
I'm only one vote, I'm only one vote.
No, with your public comments.
If I may, before that, we actually did have a motion to postpone this question. Is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'm gonna second that.
Discussion on, on that point?
You're gonna have two motions live at the same time? You have them, your motion?
Yeah, I believe we can table a motion while we're in discussion, I believe. Postpone a motion while we're in discussion.
Withdraw the motion. I don't think you can postpone it.
I don't think you can withdraw it. I think you can, I think you can postpone it. Let's assume we can.
Okay, so a motion by Tony.
Yeah. No, it wasn't, it was by Art.
Art, sorry.
And I second it. To postpone discussion. Do we get a ruling? Do you think you'd get it within the next...
I thought he was gonna get it. The first time I talked to him, he got right back to me. Within 20 minutes. This morning I called him, first thing, I never heard a thing.
Well, we'd like to see, see, have him send an email or write it.
Oh, yeah, that's what I asked him for, but he never got back to me.
And what was the question? Should you recuse yourself because you own land next to a...
Should I? Yeah, should I recuse myself, because I had stated that I thought the garage should go on that land, and that I was being asked to recuse myself just because I own land next to the, where the garage was gonna be.
But then you said you, the town shouldn't be there, and it's a bad vote.
I did not say that the garage should not be there. I said the garage should be there.
Way back when this first started, you said it shouldn't be on that site, on the, dump thing, way back before you got on the question.
The question before us right now is postponing this motion.
Yeah.
All in favor of postponing this motion until Ken receives a statement from the Secretary of State relative to his recusal? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No, I'm gonna vote against, just because I think we could've dealt with this tonight, but, so it's three, two, three, zero, the motion carries, the, the question's postponed. Did I say that right?
No.
It's three, two, zero.
Three, two, zero. Thank you.
Did you read this? Was sent out an email?
No, I didn't.
I'll read that.
I have one question. Ken, how did you present this to the Assistant Secretary of State? Did you present it to the fact that you're saying you're only a landowner adjacent to the town property, or did you notify them you're also a member of the board and would be voting on it?
No, I told him that I was a member of the board, and that I was being asked to recuse myself, because the garage was gonna go on property next to mine.
And you told him that you would be able to vote on that, whether or not it'd go on that property or not?
I told him that I wanted, that I felt the garage should go there.
So you've had a, sort of a history in the past of saying, yeah, the product's a good idea, you know, budget-wise, and then at the last moment, saying, no, I don't think it's a bad idea. So what's to say that you're not gonna change your mind when it comes to selling the property?
I changed my mind on the vote, the last vote on the garage, because I found out of the rise in property taxes due to the state changing their compensation, and because of the $40,000 in interest payments that we're gonna be, the town is gonna have to pay for the loan for the garage.
See, what I'm saying is, you could go, you say, maybe now, you say that, see, that's a good idea, put it there, but what's preventing you from changing your mind just before?
If I could interrupt here, I think we're debating the garage, it sounds like to me. The question really is, is gonna come down to when all the relevant information is gathered, is does this board believe that Ken Harrington has a conflict of interest, or the appearance of a conflict of interest? So, how he voted in the past may be relevant to that question at that time, but I would suggest that there are all kinds of reasons to vote for and against the garage, and not just because you own land there. The last item that I have before we get to Margie is Select Board Goals. Just a couple of items to report unless we wanna get into discussion. I have suggested dates for the Garage Committee to reconvene. I suggest Thursdays, first and third Thursdays, just because there aren't any other regular meetings that night. I would, when I had, put that down, I had in mind that we would actually, you know, decide on, as we went along, and this is kinda how the last committee did. They did routinely meet every first and third Thursday. They would, at each meeting, decide if there was reason to meet the next time, or if they needed to, to do more research. I think we also need, as we approach that meeting, think about what it is we want that Garage Committee to do that they haven't done already, and be prepared to, I would say, come up with, with an action plan for moving forward. So any further discussion on the garage? The other main goal that the committee has before them is...
Yes, should you put out an offer for the community that we're gonna start the town garage committee?
Yes, I will, I will take an action to publicize that.
We can get that up on the website, and...
Contact the former committee.
So, I was being, I cannot spell tonight. The other we talked about for, relative to Cole Hall and the repairs here, and contemplating long-term at Cole Hall is touring the daily building. I've been swapping emails back and forth with Brian Lent, and we haven't pinned that down yet, but the last thing I offered up was this Thursday.
We got the Holy Smoke.
Ah, okay, thank you. So, not Thursday.
Unless we do that at 5:00 and get the Holy Smoke by 6:00.
Let's not try to pack that in.
Sounds funny.
So I will tell him not Thursday.
Holy smokes, you won't be able to make it.
Anything else relative to Cole Hall, repairs and maintenance and long-term viability that we want to discuss?
Have we gotten any estimates on doing any of the painting or anything, curtains?
I, I, I can give you a little bit of an update in my report.
Okay. All right, Margie, it's your.
Thanks. Tomorrow, we are pumping out the PCB oil finally, and finally, at the transfer station. Now, we have, when we cleared back the brush from around the tanks that we could get the roof off, we have found that there is oil sludge around the tank. Thankfully, it is a cement-bottom containment crib, so I had Clean and Harbor come back over. They, I thought it was gonna be Friday, but they came this morning to reassess and what we might need for extra man time and equipment to get the sludge out of there, and then they had to agree with the state of Vermont how we're gonna spec it.
So that's cleaning the barrel and the Smith enclosure?
Yeah, so we figure we've got about three barrels of sludge. It might be two liquid 55-gallon drums and then a drum of sludge, mostly solid, some organic matter in there.
People spilled when they were...
I think it's spillage, and it's also was rainwater. So, but they're due tomorrow, I don't have a date, a time that's certain. Very little item we have to appoint, I'm gonna just be jumping around across the whole litany of functions here. We have to actually appoint a grand juror, according to the Secretary of State. So, I got that word from the town clerk today, and we can just appoint somebody, it used to be Kurt Marrow, but we need to put that back on the agenda. Insurance bidding is underway, proposers have been asked to bid by your next meeting. So the 16th is stacking up to be quite a busy meeting, because we're also aiming to try to get truck bids, ad and chassis, and for that night as well.
That includes VLCT.
So, yeah, we've only had two bidders historically on the insurance, property casualty liability and workman's comp. It was passive and Will's Insurance. There was one other local agency that expressed interest in seeing the RFP, sure, sent it to us, but never, never pursued it. But I need to cover ourselves with an ad in the paper for that, because that's a major line item in our budget.
Is that gonna be Vermont League of Cities and Towns behind that, too?
That, when I say passive, that's an abbreviation for their property and casualty fund.
Okay.
Municipal unemployment insurance casualty fund, whatever. So that is the League of Cities and Towns.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so they are scheduled to be here. We just got loss runs from Dave Newell, so I will just shoot that out tomorrow to anybody that's...
How many truck bidders?
Truck bidders? The long way to get there is to say that the way the ad is being phrased is to not exclude anybody. Truck bidders, the long way to get there is to say that the way the ad is being phrased is to not exclude anybody. So it's an all-inclusive appeal for a heavy-duty tandem axle truck. If we get a Kenworth bid, you know, we'll take a look at it. We could've decided to go with maybe just trying to get three international bids, but we had, when we did this two years ago, we opened it up to everybody, all manufacturers. So that's how we're approaching that, and so the rest of your question, Ken, was?
Well, just how many, how many truck bidders? Because there's only one really big, one dealer around here, Delory.
No, we had several bids.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, folks outside of Albany. We get several international dealers, of course.
You don't contact them, you just make it public and they have to?
Oh, I do. We do contact.
Oh, you do contact?
We do. We do double duty.
Okay.
To make sure people know, but that could, you say narrow the field too much? I don't know. Because there, historically, there were only several known bidders that our foreman would talk to and find were interested in bidding. And so anytime that we put the legal notice out, they will send notice, the legal notice. Now, if that practice seems a little off, then we can definitely adjust our arguments, not casting stone. So you prefer just to go ahead?
Have you already done it, or you haven't done it?
All we've done is, I've gotten the ad ready, the ad is gone, and I'm getting everything to be loaded on the website the ad refers to. So whether you do direct mail inquiries, that's you.
This is a lot like notifying property owners that, that you're gonna, you know, do we notify everybody, or do we just put it, make it out a public thing? And I think, I think really, if you start notifying different dealers and you miss somebody, I think you're better off just making a public thing out to everybody and say, and let it go with that, rather than send, that would be my?
Well, that's good. It cuts down the work for me.
Yeah. I think you could just put out an RFP.
Yeah, but you had to run it in a few different papers.
Well, legally, I mean, Margie knows how to do that.
Well, yeah, what I could do is?
Albany, Burlington, Brattleboro.
Well, that gets very expensive.
It's so expensive.
I could do, I could hit the Rutland Herald.
Yeah.
And that picks it up. And the banner, we have to do, because it's a paper of choice. But there's also the bid system. And that's online.
That's right.
I have that. So similarly, we're gonna be bidding for landfill mowing services. Historically, we tried, we were trading services between North Bennington and Shasberry road crew in one year, North Bennington mode, but it's very, with scheduling and emergencies and weather, you just never know. So this year, I'm gonna place an ad. It's not a heavy-duty line item. It's always less than, say, $4,000.
That's twice a year, mow twice?
Well, I'm thinking that to stay, if we can stay on top of it and do it monthly, it's, I mean, here it is now, June 2nd already, to try to do it monthly before we have to brush out. I am concerned that we have to do some cap maintenance first, or during, whoever's mowing is gonna have to take on. Just fill, remember the inspection we did, and we just got some.
There's a few?
Erosion areas that really need to be dressed and filled, and then?
Couple gopher holes, or rat holes, or whatever.
I am behind on advertising, a lot of advertising, for the planning commission vacancies. I still am not sure we have two or one. We're down two reporting clerks and the health officer, so that will be underway.
Did you get an email? Did you get a letter of interest for the DRB?
DRB? Or Planning Commission?
Planning, no, DRB.
DRB?
For an alternate. I think I got an, I think I got an email from?
I will take a look.
For the alternate position.
Yes, I remember that.
Remember the name, though.
Yeah.
We should get, we should, I mean, put out, we were looking for him again, and then get him in here and interview him, and? It's nice to have a full board.
Try to do that your next meeting, or wait until?
Well, I mean, it's on the website. We have a vacancy, right?
For DRB alternate? I have to confirm that. Can't remember what's posted. Let me all that up. We have some loose slate above on this roof, so we've gotta get in touch with a roofer, so I'm working on that. You have an unlicensed dog list from the town clerk that's coming your way, and that, effectively, once she notifies the select board by statute, we're trying to figure out whether it's today, because she handed it to me to give to you, or whether you have to see it, she can start charging the $10 late fee, which comes into the general fund. That's not a town clerk fee. So I, we made it an agreement, I think that, and I will start writing it as policy, that once the list, the unlicensed dog list is transmitted to the board, she can impose a $10 fee, if that makes sense. Following up on the FEMA hazard mitigation grant for the generator installation, I can see what is going on with FEMA. They are getting, their volunteers come in for shifts of two or three weeks. They're assigned to various tasks in Waterbury or Burlington, wherever they are. And if we're lucky, that somebody is assigned to the pile of hazard mitigation grant applications that are waiting to be declared either eligible for funding or ineligible for funding. So I just heard today from a volunteer that's gonna be here for two weeks who sounded very encouraging about the status of our grant. The cost-benefit analysis portion of it was worrisome. It didn't seem like we weren't that critical of facilities, so there are negatives to that, meaning that we're not an emergency operations center. We would've had a higher score if we were an emergency operation center that needs a generator. Instead, it's a shelter that may be used periodically that's asking for a generator to be installed. But anyway, so apparently, the strategy is going to be of this fellows is to recommend that our application be forwarded to the regional level of review panel, and then the cost-benefit analysis will be pooled. We're gonna be thrown into a pool so that they handle these, they're trying to give us money, but they, I think they have to meet the, meet some requirements first in their eligibility criteria. So it's gonna be a longer process. That's what I got out of this, is that we absolutely do not see this as construction season. It would be next construction season. So I'm looking at, we have to make sure we have our local share available for the fiscal '15 or '16 budget, depending on the June 3rd deadline, you know, where you are. So the question is whether, what Jerry should proceed with right now in the way of installation with the budget that he's got remaining.
I have a call in to Jerry, but I didn't ever hear back from him. I understand he's had some issues personally.
Yes, yes.
But if you hear from him, yes, I would like to know.
I will let him know.
What would be great is if we can spend $15,000 that we have budgeted on that generator and get us $15,000 closer to the final total while we wait on our grant. Kinda depends on how the workflow goes, so it may be that there's no point in doing it until we have everything. The real question would be, you know, especially the question would be, if we can spend $15,000 and get us, you know, that much closer, in the event that we had an emergency and needed to hook it up, would we be, would it be easier than in the state it's in now? That would be a real reason to spend that money now rather than later.
Definitely. Ken, I did, we talked about the forklift.
Yeah.
And about trying to move forward on getting, taking a step to what we're really gonna be doing with it.
Yeah.
So I did email Dan Whipple back on May 21st. I haven't heard back, but I also haven't pursued it.
Who was that person?
He's the person you talked with at OSHA.
Oh, okay.
Regarding the welds and the, which way you can retrofit, going from a loader to a forklift to a loader.
Yep, yep.
But his email to you said he didn't have a lot of information on the make and model. So what I did was send in the make, model. I sent him everything that we had.
Yeah, wanted to tag it, yeah.
So, and I said, you know, this is a, it's a piece of equipment that needs to be used, should be used. Can you please get back to us with some recommendations, and also for an engineer that could check it out, a structural engineer, whoever? I just don't even know the type of engineer he?
Well, he told me it was either, like, as a mechanical engineer, or a member, or a person from John Deere.
And we know that that, I checked with Terry. John Deere will not.
They won't?
No, they're not gonna stand by our welds and what we've done to modify this machine. They've been down to watch a lot.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it just, the only reason that I contacted them was I was afraid of the liability from OSHA to the town.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, and I?
I'm at a point where I, I think that, it's fine. That's where we are.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to move forward, but I, there's only so much I can do now.
Oh, yeah, I know, I understand, but I mean, them guys are brutal. If they catch you with something, they'll throw the book at you.
Well, you know what would be very helpful? If you could dig around, see if you can come up with the name of a mechanical engineer.
Okay, I'll see what I can do.
Because that would help us a lot.
Yeah, okay, fine.
Because then we can move along on that.
Yeah. I mean, it is a shame that you're sitting out there.
Tremendously. Yeah, yeah.
What was that? You need him to find a mechanical engineer to do what?
Just, I need brainstorming. How, who to call.
Yeah.
To validate the world, to validate the changes.
That's why I turned to this man. They're the ones that use technical assistance arm, and?
Because I mean, without that, without that being approved by somebody, the liability to the town is unbelievable.
I don't think anybody's questioning that.
No, no, I'm just, you know, it?
Then lastly, on my notes I had, that Tim has sent around a draft. He shared it with me, draft decision on the Don Green Road discontinuance, and I have yet to get back to Tim on that. But I think, you know, doesn't have to be complicated. The only other?
Yeah, I think I should just compare what I wrote with your notes, your meeting notes tonight, that we approved, and make sure that we cover the same bases, but?
The only other news is that Liz Green has passed on.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, no, I just sent it to her for tacos.
But there is no, no longer a tenant. So that's all I have from you.
So nobody's?
What was that you just said?
Oh, the tenant, Liz Green had life estate. She has passed on. So Peckham, and has owned the house, but there's nobody that is living in the house.
Oh, okay. So perhaps we can?
I don't, I don't think there's any problem with us not plowing the road in the wintertime if nobody's living there. That's?
Yep.
Isn't that mandated if it's a class-three road?
No, not, not to be plowed. Only, my only concern was if somebody was living there, it was our responsibility to keep that road open.
But a class-three, if it's a class-three, you have to maintain it. You have to keep it passable for fire trucks or whatever. If it was, we changed it to a class-four or a trail, then we could've done?
It's the only, it's the only little spur road of its kind.
Sure, I agree.
Except for?
I didn't realize that. Had she passed away when we?
No, we, it was in the news just after you took action.
Yeah.
Yeah. That could change things in the next?
She was like eighty-nine?
Okay. My only concern was somebody was living there.
Well, they may rent it.
Is that it, Margie?
That's it for me.
Other business?
I just wanted to thank Joe Herman for the tour of the water plant.
Yes.
The water facilities.
That was very interesting.
It was longer than I expected, but it was great. It was really fascinating, so.
He's gonna, I'm gonna come back around. He's gonna, I talked to him at the Memorial Day Parade. He's gonna give me a little side tour.
Yeah, it was excellent. It was really well done. And God, he has all the information in his head, so, but thank him.
Did you get to get up to the reservoir, start from there on the way down?
Yeah.
Come all the way back, yeah.
I love the coyote.
All right, review of action items. What I caught was there's a meeting with the landowners on Holy Smoke Road this Thursday at 6:00 PM to discuss maintenance on the road. Art, you are, you're going to be meeting regularly on Thursday mornings with the road crew as highway liaison. We're going to, Margie, Mitch, and Tim will request agreements from the other solar companies and also their references. Margie will discuss with the zoning administrator what local zoning action comes into play relative to putting solar on the landfill. Walt is gonna talk to Jeff Metcalf about who's using the batting cage. Tim and Mitch are gonna get estimates on a water fountain at Howard Park. Art's gonna talk to the lines about cleaning the tennis court surface. I will publicize the reconstitution of the garage committee. I will try to find another date for a tour of the daily building. And Ken is going to find an engineer to validate or not the customizations on the forklift. Did I miss anything?
You said Walt Merritt's gonna ask Jeff Metcalf?
I thought it was somebody else.
Art, that's what I thought.
Well, Jeff Metcalf has an office straight down in North Bennington. I can?
Thank you. Yeah, Art. All right, I believe Art wants to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss personnel issues. Do you have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll go into executive session. No.